The City Council just came back from a closed session and I'll ask the city attorney to report out.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council received a briefing from the city attorney and one of our consultants with regard to one item of anticipated litigation. There was no action required of council. It was just a briefing, so there's no reportable action on the item tonight. Thank you.
Right, thank you. So the, now we'll adjourn the closed session and then we will immediately, because it's past seven thirty, we, it will immediately start a regular meeting, June seventh, Temple City City Council meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Fish.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam Sternquist.
Here.
Mayor Yu.
Here. Thank you. Our next item is invocation. We're very happy tonight to have Reverend Jim Walden from First Baptist Church here tonight, and he will lead us in the invocation. Reverend Walden has been with the, has been a pastor of First Baptist Church of Temple City. Next, down the street, at a block away. For four years, and the First Baptist Church is a growing, vibrant, multi-ethnic, multi-generational congregation. They host two other congregations, Rock Mountain Baptist Church, Mandarin-speaking congregation, and First Ketchin Baptist Church, a Fermi congregation. They also have a children's vacation Bible school that will be held July tenth to July fourteenth this year. The theme this year is basic elements. And right after the invocation, we're very happy tonight to have Trip One Seventy Four. That will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Trip One Seventy Four is really a high adventure trip. They will start the peak hike season in June. They'll be hiking the San Bernardino Peak this coming weekend and spending a night at Limber Pine. At the end of the month, they will be doing a day hike at Mount Baldy. Sounds very exciting. They meet every Thursday at Westminster Presbyterian Church near the corner of Temple City Boulevard and Live Oak Avenue. The meeting is run from seven thirty PM to nine PM. Everyone's welcome to visit at any time. So please rise. Pastor, please say this with the invocation.
Let's pray. Father, today is one of those days again that we are so grateful in America for freedoms, the chance to vote. Thank you for that awesome responsibility we all have, because we believe freedom comes from you, our wonderful Creator. And Lord God, once again, I'm so grateful for this town and ask that you would bless every citizen. Thank you for this state and this nation. And as I think about this City Council, Father, and the burdens that they bear, I ask that you would encourage them, that there would be peace and unity and hope, that you would bless us in our endeavors together. So thank you for loving us and for being here. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Those in uniform, please salute. Everyone else, place your act of honor and part. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Detail about face. Detail, more in mark. Detail hall.
Thank you. Next item is ceremonial presentations, and as every month, we will have Pet of the Month. And Diane Rios from the St. Gabriel Valley Humane Society, she's a volunteer, will introduce Pet of the Month.
And with me is Cindy Rigney. She's our president of our board, Board of Directors.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for letting me interlope a little bit tonight. I was at the shelter about four weeks ago when these wonderful good Samaritans came in carrying a cardboard box and crying their eyes out. And inside this little cardboard box was this little dog, completely covered with blood.
Wow.
These are cleaned up quite a bit. We immediately took him up to the emergency clinic, and I went up there later on that night to visit him, because he had touched me so much, and I saw for the first time in my life a dog in an oxygen box, clearly in shock. We don't know if he'd been hit by a car and dragged, or if he'd actually been thrown out of a car and landed on his head. We were very concerned about head trauma, because it was, still has some scarring up on top. But we're happy to report Peter is happy. He's healthy. He's been neutered. He's got all of his shots. And he is doing very, very well at the shelter. He's made a lot of new friends, both of the four-legged variety and the two-legged variety, and he would love to go to a new home. Diane is one of our wonderful volunteers, and she's keeping him tonight, because she can't bear to take him back to the shelter. So this is Peter. And then I think Diane also has a few extra surprises, I believe.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I just, we never are able to bring other cats here, so I thought I'd bring some pictures of the cats, let you see that we do have a lot of cats at the shelter. They need adopting also. And they're, you know, that's just a sampling of some of the ones we have. Also, we have a contest going on that I wanted to let everybody know about. It's a photo contest. It's free to enter. It's for our calendar, and if you have an animal that you would like to be the month, you know, calendar of the month, of that month, you know, submit your thing. Just go to our website and you'll see the information there. So, and Councilmember Chavez, you'll be glad to know that Max was adopted.
Good. Diane, I actually have a question. My wife knew. That was a German Shepherd.
Yes.
Good.
I want to thank Diane, because most all of these pictures are taken by her. She's not a professional photographer, right? You never know it.
Actually, I have a question for you. Besides animal sheltering, you also, you mentioned a clinic, and that's open to public if they need medical.
We have a low-cost spay-neuter clinic. We have a vaccination clinic. If it's an emergency situation where we have to have a vet, we do not have an onsite vet the majority of the time. We use an emergency clinic.
But certain times, if folks need shots and stuff, they call and make arrangement, come on the days when your vet is in, right?
Absolutely. Yes, yes. We do vaccination clinics Tuesday through Friday from two to four. And we are adding back a Saturday shot clinic as well, and then our low-cost spay-neuter clinic is appointment only, and that is Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Okay?
All right.
And we're at eight-five-one East Grand, if anybody wants to drop by. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, thank you. Next item is public comments for, on items not listed on the agenda. Anybody who want to address the City Council? Yes? No? You see, none, I'll close public comments. Next item is consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion, unless pulled from the list.
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
Okay, it's moving seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the consent calendar has been approved.
My goodness.
Next item is public hearing. The item before us tonight is the modification of an approved conditional use permit to allow exterior improvements for a new restaurants, restaurant located at ninety fifty-five Las Tunas Drive, number one oh five. That is the Camellia Square. So, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Yu, members of the council, before you tonight is an, is a appeal by the applicant. Mr. Reimers, our planning manager, will provide a presentation and overview and for your deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Reimer.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you tonight is a modification to the conditional use permit that originally approved Camellia Square Shopping Center at the northeast corner of Rosemead and Las Tunas. The applicant of this modification is a tenant for a restaurant. It's, the name of the restaurant is Bistro Nah, and they're looking at modifying the storefront and the sign at the site. Just to remind you of the location and the zoning of the site, both are commercial. The current use, currently, the building shells have been completed, and what we're seeing right now are interior improvements going on. On April twelfth, the planning commission heard this item and gave a recommendation to the City Council, and that was to deny the requested changes. This is the project site at the northeast corner of Rosemead and Las Tunas. The building, the tenant is within Building One, which is the building that runs east-west and is set back to the back of, to the rear of the site. The City Council originally approved a conditional use permit to allow this development. That conditional use permit set a certain number of uses on the site, a certain square footage, a building layout, and included some conceptual drawings. And those are the drawings, this is one of the drawings that was a part of that CUP package. That conditional use permit package and the architectural drawings that came with it essentially approved a Spanish architectural style for the site with red clay tile roofs, stucco, colonnades and arches and so forth. So this, these, this is a drawing that was included in the CUP packet. Since then, this is the building permit, these are the building plans that were approved. The tenant space that we're looking at in the, is within Building One, which is at the top of this slide. It's one of the tenant spaces that's in the arched colonnade or, colonnade, word. The Building One here, the tenant space that we're looking at that's looking to modify, is the westernmost arch, behind the westernmost arch. And then this is what you would see on the ground today. The driveway off Las Tunas basically comes into the site, and one would see this, this tenant space here. This is the area that they're looking to modify. It's one of thirteen different tenant spaces within the proposed development. I mean, within the proposed building, within Building One, I'm sorry. This is a, zoomed in to see the tenant space that's being proposed to be modified. Along above it is the canopy where the sign is proposed to be located. This is another view of Building Number One. The tenant space, again, highlighted in red, we're looking at. The applicant is looking to modify just their tenant space, and this is one of the issues with the application, is that what we're looking at is a building that has multiple tenant spaces. Each of those tenant spaces was proposed to be the same, to be consistent, and all that's being proposed is to modify just this, just this tenant space. The applicant originally proposed, or one of the original proposals was to, to provide a revised storefront that allowed for a brick, gray brick veneer, along with a different sort of orientation, or not orientation, but a different size of the door, a metal grate over the top, and a new sign location, or an additional sign location, that had a gold background with black lettering. Since that time, this is a, this is zoomed in to see the actual materials and some additional detail on the door. Since that time, the applicant has revised the proposal in response to some of staff's concerns about the gray not being consistent with the style of the architecture on the site. So in response to that, they've revised the material to be a brown brick instead of a gray brick. Zoomed in, this is the brown colored brick, which admittedly looks like it fits better with the brown stone veneer at the bottom of the, of the arches. They've also provided an alternative brick, which is a bit more refined. This, the first brick is more distressed. Of the two, staff would prefer the distressed one, because it's more similar to the stone veneer. However, staff continues to recommend not approving this modification, and that, for the most part, is because staff is concerned about keeping a level of consistency amongst the storefronts. The concern is that as we add additional architectural styles, as we add additional materials and different colors, each, not just to this storefront, but to other storefronts, the architectural style of the building could get lost. Compatibility could become an issue, and we would have a basic potpourri of different styles and storefronts on the site. So staff recommends keeping a consistent style and keeping the architectural style of the site. In addition to the brick that's being proposed, the metal grate is also a sign, additional sign that's being proposed, that gold sign with black characters above the door. That is not in keeping or is inconsistent with both the zoning code and the master sign plan that's, that's on the site. A master sign plan is an entitlement that, that was required by the conditions of approval. It's basically a plan that tries to create a sense of, not uniformity, but compatibility amongst all the signs on a shopping center, and provides a consistency in terms of location, size, sometimes colors, in order to create harmony within a shopping center. This master sign plan requires the sign to be located on the canopy above. The applicant is proposing one on the canopy and also over the door.
Mr. Reimer, may I ask a quick question here? The master sign plan was approved by council, or was, was it part of a CUP?
The council required, as part of the CUP, a master sign plan to be approved by the director. So it was reviewed by the director and approved by the director.
Who else worked on that master plan besides the director?
The planning staff, so both the planning manager and the associate planner.
With the input of the owner of the property?
Yes, the owner of the property was the applicant in that case.
So he would have had to agree to it, correct?
Yes, the property owner agrees to, to the master sign program.
I have a question. Scott, I have a question. Facing that, can I assume that the door is not centered under the arch?
That's correct.
And right now, are there any other entrances that are facing Las Tunas? I, I know there's another business next door, correct? Or not?
The one on the right?
The ones on the.
The one on the corner, right?
Not, not the ones on the corner, because I know that's completely a different facade. But is, are there any other doors right now to entrances of businesses on the same side that face Las Tunas?
On this building?
Correct.
Yeah, on this building, there are almost thirteen different storefronts that face Las Tunas. So on the bottom of this slide, under the archways, there are a number of different storefronts. Some of them are within the middle of the arch and some are behind the pylons.
And on, okay, all the way to the right, that's the, that's what's vacant?
All the way to the, all the way to the right is vacant, and most of the units in that.
Would that be like, what, the first four? Or the four coming from the right?
Let me, let me go to a different side that might help you see the whole building.
There we go. Oh, that one, that one. That's the one I want to see.
They all go vacant.
So this, this in the red box is the proposed location that we're talking about. There are additional tenant spaces along that same elevation.
Okay.
The one just to the east is, I believe, a proposed day spa. And then the rest, I think, are, haven't been leased or are vacant.
Yeah, this is a vacant building.
But there are doors there.
There are door fronts, yeah.
The doors are not necessarily centered.
Thank you.
There are a lot of shopping centers in the area. We, we reviewed shopping centers in Arcadia, Pasadena, Rosemead to see how similar issues have been handled. What we found is that in many of the shopping centers, there may be architectural variation to reduce the mass of the structure. But most of the shopping centers require the tenants to continue to keep a consistent look throughout the shopping center. Sometimes awnings are changed, the colors, but mostly the unique identity of a site is provided by the signs that are provided on the site. So in conclusion, staff, the major concern with this application is the, is not the design of the actual storefront that the applicant's provided. The, the design of the storefront is quite handsome. The, the concern here is that this storefront would not be consistent with the other storefronts along this building. There, this is only an improvement to one of thirteen storefronts, that no other improvements are being proposed on, on this building. There are numerous shopping centers in the area. All of them have, or they have uniform storefronts, with the exception of sometimes awnings or canopies, and that the additional sign is in conflict with the master sign program and the zoning code. Before we, before I close my presentation, I want to bring up a few issues with the council that they may want to consider as they deliberate on the issue. This would be, if the council denies the modification to the CUP, what will happen is that the storefront will be as completed as originally designed and proposed. That means there won't be additional stone or brick veneer around the opening. The additional sign above the opening would not be approved. If the council, though, approves this modification to the CUP, you may want to consider a few things, and that's whether you would want to require or allow other storefronts to have a consistent, but not uniform improvement, perhaps chosen from a palette of approved colors and materials. The, the understanding is that if you approve just this modification, you may want to require the other storefronts to. The, the understanding is that if you approve just this modification, you may want to require the other storefronts to be modified as well so that it looks like it has, there's some consistency. If that is your desire, then, um, we would want to determine who would be responsible for making those decisions. If the council wants to be the final decision maker or if you would feel comfortable with the planning commissioner, staff making that decision. Or...
I have an additional question, uh, who is going to pay for that?
Could be the...
Would that be the applicant or the city or the owner of the property?
Could be the owner of the property.
Can we force that on you?
Or you could, uh, direct staff that you're approving only a modification to this tenant and this tenant space and that to, um, direct staff to inform future tenants that the council's desire is not to modify other storefronts accordingly. So those are some other issues we'd like you to consider as you deliberate.
Isn't that kind of what we've already done with the, uh, master, the, what do you call it?
Master site plan.
Master site plan? Isn't that what it says? We've already been telling these tenants, is this is what the master site plan says and...
Site plan.
But yeah, if, but if, if the council wants to allow just a change to this, to this tenant space, but doesn't want to look at changes to other tenant spaces, we would want to know that that's your direction so that we can inform future tenants. With that, we would recommend that the council open the public hearing, accept public testimony and adopt a resolution finding that the project is exempt from CEQA and denying the request to modify this conditional use permit. Staff is available if you have additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Emmer. Any other questions from council at this point?
Yeah, I, I have, um, I guess, I'm trying to understand the, uh, you mentioned that this modification would result in sort of inconsistency of the original architectural design. Is that something that was built in as part of the CUP resolution? That was adopted for the entire square or is that more of a, sort of like staff's interpretation of what that site should look like? So, um, when the conditional use permit was brought before the city council, that package included some architectural drawings about what the site would look like. As the project goes through additional refinements, it's staff's job to find that those plans are in substantial compliance with the plans that were approved by the city council. So, um, as modifications are required due to refinements and design, it's incumbent upon staff to determine whether those modifications are in keeping with the original approval. When we reviewed these modifications, we did not believe them to be in substantial compliance with the overall architectural style, with the materials, um, and with the direction that the, with the plans that the council saw. That's why we brought them forward for your review. And, and also, um, I mean, this, this CUP, this application is coming from the business owner, the tenant, right? Now, I guess what I'm trying to understand is they're asking to modify a CUP that was done by the owner. So is, is the owner in agreement with the t- uh, tenant's application to modify that CUP? Yes, the property owner is in agreement to allow the tenant to modify the storefront, um, as part of the project. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Hey, just to follow up on that and, but I, my understanding in the report is that the owner is not in agreement to, uh, modifying the entire...
Right.
Stretch.
That's correct.
Correct.
The owner has no, has not expressed an interest at modifying all the storefronts accordingly.
To the best of your knowledge, was the applicant aware of this, uh, master sign program, uh, prior to signing the lease and proposing these changes?
I can't speak to whether they reviewed the master sign program before they signed the lease. But the, it is, the master sign program is made available to applicants, um, when they come in to look at, um, when they come in to find out what are the sign, sign requirements for a project. Typically, that's done by the sign contractor. The sign contractor would contact the city, seek out what are the sign regulations for the city and whether there's any master sign program for a development, typically for shopping centers.
And do you know if that was done in this case?
I have to assume it was.
Is the applicant here, the city? Maybe we can ask him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Before you come up, let, let's finish with the, the city council. And, and I just want to ask the, uh, uh, clarification, sort of in general anyway, for all CUPs. Because a lot of the businesses, when before they can submit building plans, they actually all establish your business, they need to have, uh, most of the users will require a conditional use permit, right? And so as part of the requirement to submit a CUP application, does the city require the, uh, the owner of the property to actually agree and submit the CUP submittal, right?
The, uh, the application for an entitlement requires both the applicant's signature and the property owner's signature to ensure that, uh, a tenant is not doing something that the property owner doesn't know about.
So I suppose we can reasonably assume that, uh, when a, when a business submits plans to the city for a conditional use permit entitlement, the owner would be, would be safe to assume the owners substantially agree with what's being proposed?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just want to ask that and for everyone's benefit. So any other questions for Mr. Emmer? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up for a public, uh, hearing. And is the applicant here? Please come up and, uh, make your presentation. I think, uh, Councilmember Chavez actually has a question, uh, for you. I, is, are you aware of the, uh, sign plan and, so maybe you can answer that after, at the end of your presentation. Please identify your name and...
Uh, my name is, uh, Stanley Thai. Um, I'm from JWMS Architect. Uh, address, eight nine three two Mission Drive, uh, unit one oh one, Rosemead.
Okay. I'm sorry, your last name is?
Uh, Thai.
Thai?
Yes.
Yeah, can you speak closer to the mic, please?
What is your position again?
Uh, I'm a, uh, architect.
Okay. Are you the applicant in this situation or you work for the applicant?
Uh, I work for them.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Uh, council and, uh, staff and ladies and gentlemen, greetings. I'm here to present, uh, the concept of a Bistro Noc, um, exterior design. Uh, Bistro Noc is, uh, actually is a high-end, uh, restaurant targeting at, uh, customer who are interested in ancient, uh, China royal dishes. Our design has a typical traditional, uh, Chinese architectural element, which is a fit, uh, restaurants' image and the customer, uh, customer expectation, expectation as well. The size of a design that determine the, is not, actually is not visible from the, uh, outside of the plaza. Actually, it's like a, uh, people won't be able to see, um, see the, just by, like, driving by on the Las Tunas. Because of the, uh, our location in the plaza is inside a plaza. And also there's a hallway, uh, in front of our, um, um, like a storefront. So we designed in the storefront, actually it's like a third layer, the, the third layer of, uh, that, that, that site. And however, the, it's a unique enough that if a people going to the plaza, uh, they will notice there's a, something different that, that can, uh, attract, uh, customer. And, uh, and they can easy to look at, uh, locate this restaurant. And so from my, uh, actually from my point of view, I think the, uh, standard, uh, standardized and the diverse style are actually are equally beautiful. And, uh, is a, if there, there's a too many, too many, um, style mixed together, it may look, uh, cha- chaotic. But i- if every building look at exactly the same, the people will lose their interest and, um, get tired and boring of our entire plaza. So I think the best way is to find a, a balance, uh, the design. So our, I think our design is just, uh, reach the balance point, standing out but humbley, but not too strong to affect the overall plaza image. Yeah, so as a conclusion, I, I believe the exterior design is perfect for the restaurant. With the design Bistro Noc will attract more people to this plaza and also add, add the value to the business owner and the city. And I also have, uh, uh, three, like, uh, three, four. Uh, this, this four is like, uh, when we start to do the design and, uh, the first time submit to a city and second time, the, the, the latest one. And this one is, uh, the final decision, like, uh, this is from the outside and when they go into the hallway and you can see this. Uh, if, uh, we don't have this design, then I think that storefront will look like this way. If we don't have that, then we'll keep repeat. And this four is show the, uh, side frame of the outside and this is looking at this corner, the image of, uh, uh, plaza. And this, those two is like, uh, is a Temple City approved, a similar project around this plaza.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I lost that part. And you know what, I can't really see those. Can we bring those up here somewhere? So I, I can't see that far, I'm sorry. Getting old. Just the last one, I think I've seen the other ones already. And, and this represents what then?
Is that the one in the Kmart Plaza?
The one on the right is the Kmart, the one on the left... Yeah, the other is, oh, right is the, uh...
Oh, that's Chuang's.
It's the, uh, Susan Lu, uh, that's Temple City Marketplace. The left one's on Kmart.
The one on the right is, um, inside the TJ Maxx Daiso Plaza, yeah.
Yeah, that's one, yeah, that's one.
And the one on the left is near Hometown Buffet, right?
Yeah, right next to it, yeah.
But all those frontages are different there, aren't they?
Yeah.
Currently? So the frontage where those restaurants are, they're all mix and match, right?
Yeah, the, the shopping center, um, where from Rosemead Bou- that's along Rosemead Boulevard between Broadway and Las Tunas, where Hometown Buffet is, you have a number of storefronts that are very different in nature. The, the Chuang's, uh, Chuang's entrance, um, was approved, uh, prior to, prior to the existing staff. I can't speak to what the decision-making process was there.
Right.
Okay.
Do, do, um, is that shopping center controlled by a master sign program as well?
Uh, the, the one, uh, on the west side of Rosemead Boulevard is, has a master sign program. I don't know about the one south of Las Tunas. So, so the one...
Talking about the, um, the old Applebee's Shopping Center, Susan Lu's.
Right, that one has a master sign program, yeah.
And they're, seem to be complying with that?
Yes.
And Mr. Thai, I'm sorry, but what was your point about those two, the, at the bottom? What was your, the point you were trying to make?
Uh, actually, I, we, that's just simply, we see some example and we, we put it...
So those are examples of other, I guess, uh...
Yes.
That are not consistent with the surrounding building?
Yeah.
Or there...
Councilman...
President.
Councilman Chavez, I think the other thing he mentioned was that you can't see the sign of the stores once you're in the hallway.
Oh, okay.
Because they're above, in this one, because it's up on top.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, and I think the earlier, there was a question.
Were, were you aware of the master sign, uh, uh, program or agreement that was in place for this unit when you decided to, uh, look at this, uh, location?
Yeah, I think that when we design this one, I think that has a master pipe, master sign program, but it hasn't approved yet in that time.
Okay, I don't know what that, what he said.
When we do the first, first time submit, they don't, they haven't approved yet.
Okay, so you're saying when you first looked at this property, we had not yet approved the master sign program?
Yeah, I think, right, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Is that?
Is that true?
Is that true? The master sign program was approved on August nineteenth, twenty fifteen.
And when did you first submit?
First submit, uh, I think first submit, submit is like July, around July.
Of twenty fifteen.
Yes, twenty fifteen.
Is that what, when did you sign a lease agreement?
Before that.
Be- before that.
You signed a lease agreement before you looked at the property? You signed a lease agreement after you looked at the property, so it would be sometime after July of twenty fifteen, I, I would assume.
No, I think he meant that...
I'm not sure for that.
He does not have a sign program when he signed the lease. Because the sign program was...
I think what he said was that when he looked at, I, I think he said when he looked at the property, first looked at the property, which was back in July of twenty fifteen? When you first were contemplating look, taking over a loc- that location?
No, I think my question then was when he first submitted his plans to the city?
Uh, actually, first submit to the city is, uh, July.
July fifteen, right?
Yes, around that, yes.
The last year.
Last year, right.
And then, uh, the sign program was August fifteen.
Right.
The, the first, yeah, the application, the application to establish a restaurant, so the conditional use permit application was submitted on July sixth, twenty fifteen. The master sign program is, is not something that's prepared by staff, it's something that's prepared by the property owner. So that we, the, we were, we were waiting for the property owner to provide us a submittal. We were working with the property owner to review that submittal, to make sure that it, um, that it would receive the director's approval. And then on, in August, it was approved by, August of twenty fifteen, it was approved by the director. At the same time, the applicant was preparing an application for the conditional use of the restaurant. And that was submitted in Ju- at the end of July, twenty fifteen. The request to modify the conditional use permit, um, for the shopping center to do the adjustments to the design was submitted on December eighth, twenty fifteen.
When did you first become aware of the fact that there was a sign master plan, a master sign agreement that required you to submit a CUP to change that?
Because of the, the, it's kind of a back and forth. Because the first time we submit and then the master sign approved, then, then that time we, we just, we, we like, we reduce our, our size of a design. I would still keep like, uh, this looking, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Thai. Anyone else like to speak, um, and I have one speaker request or actually two? First one, uh, Mr. Stafford?
Mayor Yu, um, Mayor Pro temp sternquest, council members and city staff. When I loo- I looked at this, boy, you guys were in closed session. I'm try- I'm trying to figure out, it seems like we have a problem, this starting out with a problem of consistency for the signs and the, you know, the front entrances. We, you know, if there was, if it was approved to be consistent, we need to stay consistent with this. If we allow, if this is allowed, then somebody else is going to want to do something different. Where's the consistency? You know, I, I see a problem with that, of not being able to stay consistent with the signs. This is a new shopping center and if we don't start staying consistent with what was planned originally for signs, everybody's going to do their own thing and it's not going to look right. I think somehow we need to find a middle ground here to start, try to stay consistent and try to find a way to make something work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Mr. Choi?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Yu, city council, city staff. I am Peter Choi, I'm the president of the Temple City Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight to voice our strong support for this request by Bistro Noc to, uh, present this facade as an entrance to their restaurant. First of all, uh, Stanley was not able to say that. The owners, Andy Kong and Fred Chan, are on a business trip to Tokyo. So they were not able to be here tonight and they expressed their regret about that. Uh, Andy is the architect, Christina sitting over there is the designer. Uh, Bistro Noc, uh, first of all, we thank Bistro Noc for choosing Temple City as the location for this business. Uh, this is an upscale dining restaurant. Uh, they've spent about one and a half million dollars on the interior. Um, it's going to be fantastic when it opens and it's going to be a big plus for this shopping center. We want to thank the city staff for their due diligence. Uh, we understand, you know, what they're working with. But it is the chamber's belief that this is exactly the kind of reason that there is an appeal process, to allow this to happen. As was noted, this, uh, request was approved by the shopping center owner. Uh, first, I'd like to address this concern... Uh, first, I'd like to address this concern that if this is allowed to allow Bistro N' Az to present what is actually a very restrained entrance, um, that it will suddenly cause other tenants to want a piece of it and to do things to their entrance. Well, one can only look across the street to what we have said is a TJ Maxx, Applebee's mall across the street. If you look at the picture, uh, picture number one is Chuang's Restaurant, uh, that is a similar upscale Chinese restaurant. Uh, they have a really spectacular entrance, because part of the dining experience is to enter a dining experience. And one does not really achieve that by having a simple metal and glass door that's appropriate for fast casual or something like that. This is an upscale restaurant. Uh, they have scaled down considerably their initial design. They have met with the city staff two or three times. Uh, the first design was shown, it was a, it had a little, little more to it. It was still not garish. We are not talking something like City Walk with the King Kong gorilla or giant pagodas or something garish overpowering it. Uh, and certainly in its current design, um, it is simply an embellishment that is an aesthetic choice to welcome you to this restaurant. Um, this concern that was also expressed by the previous speaker, that other restaurants will go willy-nilly and want some of that, has not happened. One can simply look to Chuang's Mall, and I took a walk through it today to visually look at it. Most of the places have that kind of metal and glass entrance that is standard. Um, although there are other entrances that, you know, have a little more pizzazz. There's, uh, Grand Harbor Restaurant, which has a, quite a large entrance, and in fact, they have a photo mural, uh, taking of one whole wall that shows the interior of the restaurant. Um, which seems more loud than anything that is being discussed here tonight. Um, the other thing to note about the master sign plan is that when these things are approved, one does not know, and certainly I ca- I can't speak for the shopping center owner, but one does not know exactly who the tenants are. Certainly, the chamber has been in conversation with, uh, the shopping center, their consultants. There have been talk about various tenants that did not, you know, come to happen to fruition that city council members may know, uh, Smart and Final, other big box stores. One does not know until the tenants agree to come in and invest their money here.
But hasn't that been the problem all along with this shopping center, is that he was kinda putting the hard course before the cart here? Or he was building out not knowing what was gonna actually go in there, and now that he's actually built out, it seems like we're, we're making changes. For example, the, the windows on the one side of the building faces Las Tunes, now this one. I, I have to, I, I would have to disagree with what you're saying in that, based on what we've seen so far, this probably isn't gonna be the last change that's requested for this particular mall.
Well, I can't speak to that because I don't have a crystal ball. What I can say is this, uh, Councilmember Chavez. Um, this is a request from Bistro N' Az. Whatever the shopping center owner developer had arranged and agreed with the city, whatever their plans are, I do not know. Cause I'm not here to speak for the shopping center developer. I'm here to speak specifically on behalf of Bistro N' Az's application. For the Korean, uh, Kangdong Backjong Restaurant, certainly, as you have noted, they have, uh, switched out their windows at considerable expense to themselves to provide light and vision into the restaurant and also create what we feel is a very attractive facade. The chamber office is right across the street.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that's a bad change, I'm just saying it's indicative of the issues that have arisen over the last eight years with this project and, and how it's been built. So it's a much larger issue than I think what we're looking at right now.
I understand, but I, I would respectfully submit that I don't know the fairness in, uh, handling Bistro N' Az, this specific application. If there's a bigger issue, if there are myriad other mushrooms that might pop up, that is something that the planning commission, the city staff, the city council, if they wish, can address. But in this case, we are talking about Bistro N' Az's very limited request to provide an entrance to what will be a fine dining experience. Again, if you look at picture one, uh, that is Chuang's Restaurant. And, uh, to my mind, we have not received, certainly at the chamber, any negative comment about this design. And it's very similar to what Bistro N' Az has. As Stanley was trying to attempt to explain, uh, this is not on Las Tunes, this is not visible to the street, this is well within the courtyard. If you look at this, there is a covered walkway between the arches and the actual entrance. And so what you see really when you look at this space is a great beige vastness. And we are simply trying to, uh, break it up a little bit with this entrance. Um, what the other tenants may or may not want to do, I cannot speak to, uh, we don't know. Uh, but again, we can look across the street and know that many of those other tenants did not request variances and to put up, you know, burritos in front of, you know, the Mexican place or anything like that. They have not done that. And Chuang's has, uh, lived very happily with their very, uh, beautiful design. Bistro N' Az is not as big as Chuang's. And if you look at picture number two, um, ultimately, the choice we are looking at, again, this is not about the shopping center developer, this is not about the city's master site plan or anything. This is about Bistro N' Az's entrance. And basically, we have the option of two choices. One is if the city council approves this request, we have the option on the left, which is a very modified, very elegant, uh, aesthetically pleasing entrance to the restaurant. If the city council does not, then for the next possibly twenty years, we'll be looking at the entrance on the right, uh, which is really not much in, in the picture, number two. Um, you will see which is basically the metal and glass entrance. And, yes, exactly. Also, on the left, you see the request, on the right, you see what is permitted. And it is the chamber's opinion that it is good for Bistro N' Az, it is good for the shopping center, and good for Temple City and the community and all the stakeholders to have this entrance, to grant them this request. Uh, this very modified, elegant design that is not overpowering, that is not garish or outlandish, but simply reflects what you will then find within the restaurant. Again, that they have spent considerable amount of money. And again, they are spending their own money to beautify this little, uh, entrance niche to the place. The chamber, uh, strongly supports this request and hopes that the city council, uh, will approve it tonight.
Peter, is there anywhere on that signage that it's going to say Bistro N' Az in English?
My understanding, Stanley, doesn't it say Bistro N' Az in English above the arch, right? So it's similar to what Chuang's looks like now, actually. Chuang's.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Up there, right, Stanley?
No.
No, on the outside.
No, on the, on the red. Yeah.
There, okay.
This red green?
Yeah, around the top of it.
It says it, it, there's a picture of it.
Hey, what are the, the, the characters there? What do they say? What was that?
Stanley, what do the characters say?
Uh, it just said, uh, Bistro N' Az in Chinese in essence, but, but it's very humbly saying that, and play on words, is that, which is a little, uh, etery. I mean, it's play on words in, in Chi- in, in Chinese. But it's like, you know, it's not as grand as bistro, honestly, it's a really very humble, uh, it's a very humble name. It's a little restaurant, which is the little restaurant. Basically, that's what it says.
Cindy, page four.
And is that, is that, um, there was a, a lot made of, uh, I think the applicant indicated that part of the reason for this was, um,
This is what's approved.
This is their brand.
But even this is gonna be inconsistent, because there's not,
I guess we lost, uh,
There's not doors.
Stanley, um, is this the,
Are we on break now or what?
In the other location?
Oh, right, that was my argument.
So, uh,
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Uh, and Mr., uh, Councilmember Chavez, a question that is, um,
No, the question was, uh, there was, uh, uh, that, that, that there was, um, one of the driving reasons for these changes was to, um, I guess, um, highlight their brand, I guess. And I'm wondering if, is that the brand, I guess, uh, the, 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 the characters? Is that what we're talking about when you're speaking about the brand of the restaurant, uh, the, I guess, the attraction to the patrons that will come there? Is that, is that the reason why that's there? Do you understand?
Yeah, I just asked Stanley during the conversation, and he said, yes, in their other locations, they do have this sort of entrance. Um, I actually would think that it's probably a little more grandiose than what we are looking at here.
I'm just talking about the characters, not the, not the brick veneer and stuff like that. But the characters are important, I would imagine, to the restaurant.
Yes.
Is that true?
That is a yes.
Okay.
Um, and then for me, let me just express about the characters. Again, as I've said many times before, many people think because I'm Asian and I'm here in the six two six that I am Chinese. Uh, I am not, and so I don't understand the characters. Um, to me, I look at them as an aesthetic embellishment. Uh, it's a design choice. Um, but certainly, there are many who will understand the play on words, as the mayor has said. Um, what it is though, is again, uh, to underscore, when I look at the shopping center, what I see is a great beige vast wall uh, that is reminiscent of, you know, mini malls. And anything that we can aesthetically improve it, um, again, not in a garish and overpowering way, but in a very restrained aesthetically pleasing way, that is something the chamber supports. That is certainly something I support, uh, working across the street from the shopping center.
But you have to appreciate that, that our dilemma is where does that, where does that line drawn? When does it become garish in your, in your mind? You know, how, of course, we don't know that yet because it hasn't been brought to us. But at some point, I would imagine it could be. And so that's the dilemma we're facing, is that once we do allow something that's inconsistent with, although, as you say, the beige and not very pleasing look that it perhaps has now, um, you know, where do we cross that line? And I, I think, you know, it gets to the point, at least for me, that when this whole project started, and we've had so many bumps along the road, that, that we started with a certain style, a certain design, whether you liked it or not, and I'm meaning you, but anyone. Uh, it did possess a certain style, this Spanish kind of architectural Mediterranean style. And, and the idea, I think, at least from staff's perceptive, uh, point, was that it would develop into a consistent look, and that was the look. But now, of course, we're being asked to change that look, albeit for one business. But then, of course, I, I, I have to believe that once we do it for one, the next one's gonna come along and say, well, we'd like our brand as well. And then for me, it does turn in to the mini mall. Rather than the consistent architectural design, we now have a hodgepodge of different businesses that, you know, I guess, whether you like that or not is up to everyone's own taste. But, but I think that's, that's our concern. And I, how, how do you, how do you respond to those types of things? I mean, as a chamber, uh, would you be concerned with, with that type of design taking over, the different styles and things?
First, council member, I, I hear you a hundred percent, and I understand the concerns. But, uh, any appeals on a case-by-case basis, uh, planning commission, even the city council may hear from homeowners or residents who wanna make an improvement on their home. Uh, there are varying degrees, and I, I think the city and certainly the chamber trust the collective wisdom of the five elected city council members as to what is acceptable, what is approaching a little too much, and what is garish and outlandish. Um, with all due respect to everyone here, I think it's like that famous saying about pornography, I can't describe it, but I can, I know it when I see it. So in the same way, when a design is out of place, I trust that the city council will see it and understand it, and certainly the staff may as well. But in this case, uh, the chamber does not believe that this design is out of place. Um, I, I don't know that others will rush to build other entrances, cause again, has not happened across the street. When Chuang's opened a few years ago with their big entrance, it did not lead the other stores to then create visible entrance for themselves. They are all within the code.
Although there's a little bit of difference there, because where Chuang is, if I recall, it's the only restaurant in that area. The rest are other types of businesses, whereas as we know, in this particular location, it's pretty much all restaurants.
Well, actually,
So there is a little difference.
Uh, with all due respect, next door to Chuang's is, uh, a noodle shop or some sort of,
Okay, well, I wasn't sure, there might be one.
Yeah, and then right across is a couple of,
Well, yeah, on the other side of the mall, yeah, there's, I'm not saying there are no restaurants in that area, but not next to each other necessarily.
And then regarding this shopping center, the Comedia Square Shopping Center, I understand the overall design, and that's something, of course, we take into consideration. But this is not an, uh, overpowering, uh, architectural statement. It is a discreet entrance. And certainly, in a shopping center that can accommodate a floating teapot fountain, um, that has Chinese lettering on it, that can accommodate, uh, Korean-style windows, uh, in a very modern, mid-century modern lines there. Um, we do not feel that this request, this request for this restaurant in this instance, is out of place. In fact, we think that it would be, uh, a positive, uh, again, for the, the development and for the city and everybody who comes to business development.
Do you think, do, do, you made a statement earlier about, or someone made a statement earlier about the, uh, the patrons, uh, look to the entrance as far as how they're going to enjoy the place. I mean, with a restaurant, isn't it more what the food is like and, and, I mean, I would,
Well, at the end of the day, yes, an army travels on a stomach and a patron decides based on,
And I, and I thought I heard earlier that this is not, this is not a, a new business, a new location, they're very well-known. And so I would think that their, their, um, you know, their following would be there, they're, they're not a, it's not a brand-new restaurant, so.
Councilmember Chavez, if I may, I, I know you're actually, uh, talking to, um, uh, Mr. Choi here, but I, I,
If you'd like to answer for him, you can.
I was gonna answer that, because, um,
Is it okay if he answers for you?
Oh, please.
Yeah, I'm gonna answer for you. And I think the, um, I mean, I was gonna say that during my comments, period, but, but I think people need to realize the restaurant and retail design has since, has gone through a lot of changes in history. Now, just touch on a little bit, and, um, there, the, the key to retail design now is really focusing on the experience, experiences of entering, of being entertained, on the, on, on, on the total visual and, and auditory and, uh, and the moving through space experience, because, um, as you may remember, and I, and I brought a little bit of, um, uh, I just pulled that up. I mean, this is the old, old, um, Macy's store. That's the old shopping center design, brick and mortar, plain, very boring. And then, if you notice that they have since gone to this, this is their side, that their, uh, their shopping mall, the ones they recently built. I personally was involved in, uh, building or involved in the block in orange. The old mall was a, but just bunch of, uh, mon- very monotonous building. And we have found that without the entering, um, the entertainment, uh, experience, businesses don't survive. The key to survival of retail now is that ex- very experience. And, um, this is the other side of Santa Anita Mall. I mean, they have gone from what I've shown you early, even though it's still there, that Macy's still there, but how well Macy's doing, you, you can tell.
Is a restaurant considered retail?
Yeah, it is.
It is? I thought those are two different things. You have retail and you have restaurants.
Yeah.
Cause I know when we approved, uh, the, 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 what we're doing here, it was, well, how much is gonna be retail, how much is gonna be restaurant? So I thought they were treated differently.
Well, I mean, one, but, but I think the general concept is still the same, uh, because you are asking, well, why is it the, the experience of entering? It is very important, uh, as, as part of the retail design, so.
I will say that section, the new section at Santa Anita is not very popular though.
No.
It's, it's, you can go any time between nine and,
Well, it is.
Nine at night, and it's empty. Where, where it is busy is where the AMC Entrance Theater is and the Cheesecake Factory and Wood Ranch, and they don't really have these grandiose entrances.
Right, but, but what I'm saying is that the, but everybody's doing it is because they have done research that the, um, the variety is important. Um, so to, just to support or to answer what, uh, Councilmember Chavez brought up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Choi.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, uh, from anybody wanting to address the council? Okay, at this point, I'll close public comments and open up for, uh, council comments.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, if you could go back to the slide again that shows all of the arches? Yes, so there's one, two, three, four, five. Okay, so the owner, are they, or the, with the sign, are they, um, proposing to put one sign in front of each arch? Or just as the tenants come in?
The, this is the difficulty, um, because the building was subdivided into more tenants than just there are arches.
Right.
Um, the signs are not always located in the middle of the archway. So there will be a sign for each tenant.
So it's not really gonna, But it's not really gonna be consistent with what's in, what's behind it? Is that what you're telling me?
They're not always in the exact same location, I mean, I think we have a,
And what if, and what if there's only four businesses and there's five places for signs? Will there just be a hole there or?
Yeah, that's, I mean, this is, this is part of the difficulty is, um, as, as you look, trying to locate.
That's typical. That's typical.
Okay. I'm just asking, I'm just asking, cause I'm trying to visualize this.
Otherwise, you'd have to move the existing signs in order to re-center things.
Okay, and then the signs, Okay, and then the signs, the signs that are approved, are those paid for by the owner?
Each of the tenant pays for their own sign.
Oh, no, each of the tenant pays for the own sign?
Right.
But it has to be to these specs, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Dream, I have a question for you. There is a sign program that is approved by, obviously, the director. But the architectural, but there really isn't an architectural guideline, so to speak. I mean, we are looking at the general architecture of the, of the mall and interpreting that this doesn't conform. And so it's really an interpretation. There isn't a guideline, published guideline as such as some shopping mall has, an architectural guideline.
Right, the interpretation that's being made, so to speak, is whether this change is in substantial compliance with the original approval.
Right. So it's, it's an interpretation. It's not like the sign guideline, there is, there isn't an architectural guideline or architectural program, so to speak.
No, there's a condition of approval that requires the architectural plans to match the plans that were approved by the council, and that's what it hangs on.
But I think we have to be careful in, in explaining what do we mean by match because all shopping centers are, there are two phases of construction. One is corn shell, what we call in our industry. The other one is tenant improvement, which would, the tenant would bring in a certain amount of design that will definitely be different from the main structure. I mean, all shopping malls are like that. All, I mean, Santa Anita Mall, we can call, we go to inside, every, every one is different. And the example I pointed out, you know, the, every, every, every storefront is different. So I, I think we, I just wanna clarify, there really isn't an architectural guideline out there that the applicant has to follow. But in general, it's like kinda mentioned, cannot be garish and be, remain good taste and generally conforming with the, with the style of the.
Right, so the requirement comes from condition number two of the conditional use permit. It says the proposed development shall be in substantial compliance with the submitted plans dated October sixth, twenty fourteen. So any, any modification must be in substantial compliance with the plans that the council approved that day.
And I think one of the questions then before is his house is what is substantial? 'Cause as Mr. Choi's pointing out, this is very, I mean, at least his argument is a very small portion of the overall mall. Any other question?
I have another question.
Yeah.
Looking at this, I can't remember the name of this restaurant.
Chuon.
Chuon. Is, is there an issue with having all of this, all these things on the sidewalk?
We can look at the master sign program and see if there's any standards.
I mean, I don't wanna pick on this restaurant. I'm just saying, is this something that we are going to allow these businesses to do? Is put up all of these different easels with specials and all that?
May I answer that question?
Yes, you may.
'Cause there really no, unless there are.
'Cause it's a walkway. That's why, that's why I'm.
Well, there's a certain minimum that means a walkway needs to be maintained according to the building code and fire code and so forth. As long as it's not impeding exiting, unless there are other programs that prevent it, I think it's, it's permissible.
It is, okay.
I mean, I mean, you have restaurants, they have sidewalk cafe, tables, chairs.
Yeah, but this, it doesn't.
Well, I mean, just, but.
That's also not, I mean, you also have to, have to have a permit to do that, right?
No, well.
To have a, to have a sidewalk cafe, you have to have.
Sidewalk cafe perhaps, yes.
Right, but not to have signage like this with different things out in. This wouldn't be considered in any kind of a sign ordinance where there's all these different signs?
Those are typically handled as temporary signs. And a temporary sign permit is required of the, of the tenant. There's a certain size and limit to the number and duration that they're allowed, time that they're allowed to stay up.
Okay.
And while, while we're on the subject of signs, so I understand there's, if, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two issues. One is compliance with the sign, master sign program as well as our city's sign ordinance, because they have two of them. And the other issue is, as Mayor Yu mentioned, it's the architectural consistency and whether it's in substantial compliance with the original approved plans.
Correct.
So let's say they took that sign with the Chinese characters on it and they moved it to the approved location with the bistro na. Would they still be in violation of the master sign program and our city's ordinance?
You're saying if all they did was take the design that they've proposed and move it up onto the canopy, would it be in compliance?
Well, I'm saying just the characters, those four characters, 'cause that's what you're calling a sign, right? The four characters, the four Chinese characters?
Correct.
Right, if they took those four Chinese characters and combined it with the bistro na that is gonna be in front of the archway, would then, would they then be in compliance with the master sign program?
It, it may still be in compliance at that point. We would have to check to see if it fit within the dimensional requirements, but it could be in compliance.
But, but then they wouldn't be violating the one part that says you can't have two signs, right? That would be considered one sign?
That would be one sign if it all fits in the one sign area.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I think it was also mentioned in the staff report, even if they did that, there is, you're saying there's no way that they can scale the exterior veneer down to a point that staff would agree to be in substantial compliance? I mean, this kinda relates to what Councilmember Chavez brought up is, you know, where is that line that you draw between in compliance and not in compliance? So let's take it the other way. Is, is there any way that they can, I mean, they've, in, in my opinion, they've already scaled that down quite a bit as, you know, the applicant has shown the initial two drawings, which were, basically took up the entire wall from floor to ceiling, right? So I, I, I see this process that, you know, they've gone through plan check and then obviously there's back and forth between staff and feedback given to the applicant. And so what I'm concerned about is throughout that process, if they keep resubmitting these scaled-down versions, it means that they think that the city is going to at some point accept some sort of modification. Yet I think what I hear is staff is saying there's nothing they can do that would be in substantial compliance with the original plan.
The message to the tenant and the property owner throughout this process was that staff would not be supportive of making a modification to just one tenant space. The conversations occurred where staff engaged the property owner to determine whether they would be interested in coming up with a palette of materials and colors that would be based on the architectural style of the site and placed along all the storefronts to provide a consistent and perhaps improved architectural design of the site. The property owner was not interested in that, and the applicant had not, did not propose it. Because this structure was not purpose-built to have separate bulkheads with separate designs, staff did not feel comfortable that having a unique entrance for each tenant space would match the architectural style. If the project from the beginning was built to create a separate architectural style for every entrance, such as an interior of a shopping center or new shopping centers in other locations, then perhaps the modification that they're proposing tonight would gain staff's approval.
Okay, and thank you for that.
May I tag on it, just a quick.
Yeah, sure.
So following your logic, the only thing that can go in is a big box store then?
Yeah.
And like a Kmart or Walmart or something? Because that would not have individual signs or individual entrances?
No, I, I think it's possible to design a building of this scale with, in an architectural style that would have allowed for some unique design. I think it's possible that the property owner could provide a color palette with the different materials so that each of the property, so that each of the tenant spaces could improve the storefronts in a unique or, but consistent way.
Okay, so you, you don't mean that we have to have one business in that? But even though the building was actually designed with one business in mind, but, but getting one big enough business coming might be a bit of a chore these days. So I don't, I wanna just make sure I'm not hearing that only one big business can go in there.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Are you sure?
I just want, one more. If, if Bistro Na was located where the Korean barbecue is located, would you still deny the CUP?
Well, they don't deny anything we do.
Well, staff is recommending.
I think in their report it said that if it was a standalone, it would be a different outcome.
Right, so I, I guess, so you're. I can say that with the Korean barbecue restaurant, they, the, what you see right now is not what was originally proposed. The original proposal there was to add architectural elements and materials that were not found on the original approved architectural set. They wanted to add in metal canopies, they wanted to add in additional windows, they wanted to add in colors that were not originally approved. We, we denied them, we told them we wouldn't find that in substantial compliance with the original approvals, that if they wanted to move forward with that, they would have to go to planning commission and council and gain their approval. That's why they came back, scaled back the, the amount of changes to increasing the size of the windows, which provides greater access and view into the site and to change the mutton pattern on the windows. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did the tenant ever express any interest in just having the additional sign and not remodeling the, the store entrance? 'Cause it sounds like it's two different things.
Not that I'm aware of. The conversations that I'm aware of throughout have been adding new materials and changing the colors of the, of the whole tenant space and providing the additional sign.
Okay.
And Ms. Dream, and now you're saying the, the brick that they're proposing is closer to the stone on the structure, right?
Yeah, the, they've chosen now a brick that's a better color match to the stone veneer that's on the building.
That was my question. It's hard to tell from the photos, but it looks like it's closer to me.
Yes, it's, it's much improved.
And, and, and these run all, all along the whole side, right? The ones on the, not the one on the bistro na, but the, the brick that's on the front of the building there runs all, all the way.
Yeah, at the, at the base of each arch is a, is a stone veneer that, that is along the whole building line.
And, and the rest of the openings are all the, those simple glass openings, I think, right?
Right, just glass and all.
Nothing around them at all. And, and the owner, the thing that was important for me is, I think you said you discussed with the owner a, a plan to maybe come up with a, a palette of different designs that would be okay, which to me makes a lot of sense. Why, why would he not wanna do that? Was that, is it a money issue or something?
Yeah, but I thought, I thought the tenant paid for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Or is it because it's part of the, it's an actual structure? I mean, it's part of, it becomes part of the structure as opposed to a sign.
That would be a financial arrangement.
But I think, I also wanna add that, you know, it's one thing to ask the owner to, or the tenant to add all that cost. But I think that in all shopping center design, there is a presupposition that is done all over the place, that is, there will be some tenant modifications. I mean, even though you.
I have another question.
'Cause they currently, most, most likely they would just build a glass door, but most, I mean, not most, all the malls that I know of, or all retail with the corn shell, the tenant will come and do some modification to the, to the door. So the fact that we have glass door today, we should not take it, that is the intention. I, I would argue it is not the intention for the door to stand away.
And I agree with you, that's why I think it would be, it would be good for the owner to do, would agree to something like that, 'cause it would add a good look to the buildings and it would, well, to me, it would be a big improvement over the glass.
Okay, all right. I think that Mayor Pretend been waiting for a long time, so I'm sorry.
A question for our city attorney. The additional sign is against the municipal code. For reference.
The additional sign's against the sign program.
And it says, and the municipal code.
Now, aren't we guided by the municipal code?
Can we approve this with going against the municipal code? Or we have to amend the municipal code?
Depends on whether or not you believe that the element above the door is in fact a sign and not a decorative element.
Here we go.
Yes.
There we go, really?
So.
Yeah, I, sorry. I wanted to make a comment that maybe will help all of you. Keep in mind that when Stafford used this, we have to take a very conservative view because we take all of our cues from what the council has approved. And in this case, there's not a lot of flexibility or latitude. There wasn't an extensive design palette that goes along with the CUP. There wasn't a, a specific plan with a very ornate or articulate or even particularly flexible design guidelines for us to follow. So staff has very limited room. You have lots of flexibility. It is, it is well within your discretion to say that what's presented up there is in substantial compliance with what you previously approved.
Right.
But, but what staff can't do is make that determination because then when somebody comes next and wants to put all chrome and glass next to that, and then somebody comes and wants to put all Greek colonnades, we don't have the ability to legislate like that. You do. So if you want to find that that is consistent with the existing CUP and your municipal code because it's not a sign, it's a decoration, then you have the discretion to do that.
So would it be prudent for us as a group to decide if we think that's a sign, first of all, or not?
That's certainly one of the things you are going to need to discuss and talk about, I guess.
I personally think it's a sign.
For our purposes, under the municipal code, a sign has two basic functions. It allows your public safety services and building officials to.
What it means that?
And public to identify what the name of the place is and what its address is. So that doesn't function for any of those two purposes.
It does not?
It does not.
Okay.
That could be incorporated into a sign.
Well, now we know. Okay, so it doesn't comply with the first.
It, it, it doesn't. However, that's not to say that you can't use characters from another language, symbols as design elements on a front facade or an entryway. That's something that you would have to decide.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have another, I have another question.
Go ahead.
And this might be for Scott. Is it common for most of these businesses that are gonna come in to want to change the en, the entrance? I mean, is that something, is that a, an expense that they're kind of, you know, expecting when they move into? And I, and I don't, because I'm just familiar with it already being built for the tenant. So when someone comes in, are, is that something that they're kind of figuring into their costs?
I would say it's not uncommon. We've already had two requests and I, we may have turned away other people who have made similar requests, but we just, they never submitted an application. Summer Rolls has made a minor change to their entrance so that they have a roll-up window, which staff felt was a minor.
This is not uncommon. This is something that most businesses do. They want to go and actually change the front of the, the store or the entrance.
And so the question that staff and the council in the end has to deal with is what is a substantial change from the original approval and whether the decision-making body approves of that change.
So for the additional cost, you don't think this would stop someone from renting it? I mean, that, that's, I mean, I have no idea like how much this would cost. Are we, are we?
I, I. We can ask the applicant.
If I can try to chime in, I think it is one thing to ask the applicant or the owner of the property to pay for certain, let's say, taking this and putting it all over the place. But I think it's another is if you put this, let's say, mainly Asian element, we can call that, 'cause that's not, just uniquely Asian, by the way. But, but the two, onto another, another entrance, but the, the new tenant may not want that. So not only is it an expense.
See, and that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Secondly, it could be a waste because they may not want that.
Exactly, I mean, I would hate for it to stop anyone, but yet I would like to be consistent.
Yeah, because let's say if I'm Tiffany coming in here, I want my Tiffany storefront.
Exactly.
Right, my character storefront.
Exactly.
Yeah.
How do you suppose cities like Irvine?
Oh, I love this, I've seen Tiffany there.
How do you suppose cities like Irvine and then get away with that? 'Cause they, you go there and everything's the same, everything. I mean, it.
The, the cities, the city council. Yeah, legislated that and. Yeah, legislated that, and that's why always, like, at least in, us who in the, in the sort of design business will always lab, well, yeah, that's only Orange County. We don't, we don't have it in LA County or West Side. We don't, you know, we don't accept that kind of monotonic stare. But you try to build something like that in Irvine, Orange County, you get chased out of town.
I know. I have, can I ask a quick question of Eric?
Yeah.
Is, is this, is this precedent-setting in any way, or do we, I think I know the answer, but I mean, I mean, I know that we, we can take it on a case-by-case basis, but, you know, that, that's my concern is that, you know, and it always is when we change things around, how binding is that going to be on us future? Because I know Staff expressed a concern, and maybe the, the legal definition would be better, is that allowing such a change could be precedent-setting and open up a, a whole new can of worms.
I think I can answer that for you.
Alright, I think you have a nice answer.
Unfortunately, it's going to be a hypothetical because you haven't actually taken any action. But let's say the council wanted to approve that, and you found that that was substantially in conformance with the prior CUP. Staff then has to take that back and interpret your decision. And your decision is that the application of some type of different material and different design elements as an individualized entryway on each of those spots is something that the council considers to be within the parameters of the original CUP. And so yes, it would set a precedent in that respect. They would have to look kind of at what you allowed here and what you determined, the type of the brick and the design elements, that you tried to stay close to the color palette, but you allowed some variation, you allowed variation in materials, you allowed a design element that was, could be a sign and other things. And then in subsequent applications, I think Staff has to take that and say, okay, that's how we read the approval, and we'll have to apply that on each of these other instances that comes in.
See, that's my concern, is are we transferring what we should be doing to Staff? And, and has that put Staff in a good position? And then what is the recourse, for example, if we don't agree with Staff? Because it sounds like, once we do set that precedent, we're giving the Staff a lot of discretion to make those determinations in the future without any emphasis from us at all.
The difficulty that you have is this, is one isolated incident. And it might not be applicable to all of the other items that come up. This, this site was originally designed for one big box user. Therefore, its design palette was uniform for the whole building. And it didn't anticipate exactly what you're struggling with, is that every small business or franchise comes in with its own architectural statement. And our design, your, your existing approval isn't flexible enough to allow that. So what your planning staff recommended to the owner is the best option. Come back in and let's relook at the design palette and design in some flexibility for the new circumstances. To Councilmember Fish's question, why wouldn't the owner want to do that? Because that requires an application, an application fee, and a fair amount of planning and architectural work in order to develop and amend that new set of, of development criteria. The bad way to do that-
That wasn't our fault, that's his.
No, no, absolutely not.
That's his gun doing, but doing what he's doing.
That's right.
Now he's making it our problem, though.
Yeah. If I just add a little bit to that, a lot of shopping centers, actually, they, not only they build a corn shell to exactly avoid this kind of, you know, gray area, because it may, may put the planning staff in a very difficult situation, is that they actually adopted or created like a sign program and architectural program, where there are certain things that, you know, with this envelope, it's, you're free, but you cannot go outside. And most shopping malls actually, I'm sure Santa Anita has it, because all the malls, big malls have, have an architectural program where it defines what you can and cannot do. So obviously, we don't have one here.
We don't have one.
Right.
We're doing it on a piecemeal basis.
Right.
As we go.
Right, okay.
You know, I, I have a question about, so the applicant brought up two other examples in the city where the exterior facade differed from the rest of the plaza. The, the one that's, I don't remember the name, the Japanese restaurant that's next to what used to be Hometown Buffet? Was that, was that approved by current staff, or was that done before the same group? Because I, I'm trying to understand why that would be okay in that case and why this wouldn't be okay.
I don't know if that was when, when that restaurant was approved. It could be that, that prop, that tenant space is probably 300 feet from the, from the street, which is, I think, more than the depth of this lot. Also, the, the shopping center there is a bit muddled in terms of architectural style. There's not one consistent style that's throughout the whole site. There's a number of, not just the Kmart and the Office Depot and the Home Deep, and the Hometown Buffet and the smaller, the smaller tenants in between. But there's also, within the parking lot, there are a number of different buildings, each with a different architectural style. So I think there it's harder to argue that there is one architectural style that this, that this tenant space conforms with. So that, that could have been the rationale that was used.
Okay, yeah, because I, I'm just trying to follow the logic here. I mean, using our current interpretation of this proposal, then I would also assume that if Chuan's had come in with their current design, Staff would deny that modification.
If, if Chuan's came in today for that, I, I think we would lean in the direction that we're in tonight. Okay.
Yeah.
I, my, my concern is sort of the consistency in how we're evaluating all these things. I mean, it kind of echoes some of the concerns that Councilmember Chavez brought up. But if we're talking about consistency in architectural design, we can also talk about consistency in how we as a city are looking at things on a case-by-case basis.
And, and that's, that's why it's important to bring an application like this before the city council to decide, is the past precedent a precedent you want to continue to follow? Or do you want to make a change in this location and set a precedent to require consistency throughout? And so that, that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, because if we're talking about precedent-setting, then the precedence, in my opinion, has already been set by Chuan's, by the Japanese restaurant. We've shown that, at least as a city, and I don't think people go into detail and try to differentiate, oh, whether city staff has changed from this year to this year, and therefore they're more inclined to approve a certain design. I think people would rather look at the city as a whole and kind of understand, alright, if I submit this to the city, you know, what should I, what kind of a response should I be expecting? Is it going to be rejected or, or not? And that was kind of my, I mean, it, it wasn't very clear when we asked the question about when the applicant submitted the application for all these designs, and then the master sign program was then approved. So there's like all these sort of developments in between that kind of make everything kind of muddy. To me, there doesn't seem like a very clear-cut, you know, solution to this.
Okay.
I have a question.
Alright.
Is there a difference between if it's a new structure or if it's an existing structure? Because that's the only difference I can see. I thought somebody said something. This is a new structure, so therefore, there's not, correct? I mean, you still have to get a CUP for-
As long as there's conditions of approval that require something to be done in substantial compliance, and they should be done in substantial compliance.
Well, if, if it's an existing shopping mall that has a CUP, and all shopping malls do, and-
Exactly.
And then, or they have, they may already have a sign program like Mr. Reamer alluded to before. And if you bring a new business, even though in the existing space, they still have to comply with that, whether new or existing. Whatever, whatever been approved is whatever needs to be in compliance. The question that I think that this, as the, as the city attorney articulated is, is whether it's substantially in compliance. It doesn't mean that it needs to be 100%, don't touch it. It's at what point is, is substantially deviated? Or as, which one is substantially still in compliance? I think that's what's really questioned before us tonight. Any more, any more questions with Mr. Reamer?
I hope not.
Okay, and then I guess the, it's time for the council to make comments. I don't know, perhaps we should take a five-minute break. It's nine o'clock, we've asked a lot of questions, maybe we do. It's kind of-
No, no.
No? Go?
I think let's do it.
Okay, do, go, alright.
Busy week.
Alright, so who, who, who wants to start first?
I'll go first.
Let's-
Want me to go first?
You want to go first, because I-
Alright, sure. First of all, I just wanted to say that I've, I really want this project to be successful. It's been many years. We've looked at it, we've gone through many changes. And it is right in the middle of Temple City. It represents us, it represents our community. And so I don't want to do anything that is going to hinder any businesses from coming. I want to, of course, encourage them to come and bring businesses into our city. With that being said, I do believe in consistency. I do believe, and of course I was not involved in this, but it was originally approved to have a certain type of structural details, and I think we need to stick with that. I don't want to see a bunch of different things in the front. I could go either for having it all consistent, I would not have a problem with doing that, or for not having anything, but it has to be one way or the other. I don't, I know it's very hard for staff, and I don't think we should leave it up to staff to decide whether it's, it goes in with our, with our plan or not. I mean, I, I don't understand how you would do that anyway. And even with the colors, I know you said that there was a color theme. Even with that, I don't want them to be all different colors, the entrances. I do understand with the two signs, I actually don't have a problem with having the sign over the door. For one, you don't see it from the street. And two-
It's an embellishment.
The owner did bring up, or the tenant did bring up a good point, that when you are in the hallway, you actually can't tell what restaurant you're going to be walking into because the sign is outside on top of the building. So I would rather have that than have all of these, these little signs out there. I would rather have an actual sign on the building. Now, I understand this particular one is going to be in a different language, but still, you would know what business you're walking into. So, like I said, I don't have a problem with the additional sign. I don't think we're going to be able to be completely consistent because again, we were thinking that it was going to be one big box store. Now it's going to be subdivided, the signage, you know, it's, it's, we're going to have to give a little on that because again, the building was not designed to have a lot of separate buildings. It just wasn't. And no matter what we do, we're not going to be able to make it like that. But we do have control over the entrances. And again, I don't want to see different architectural designs on the entrances.
Thank you. Councilmember Min?
Yeah, actually, you, you brought up a good point, Councilmember Fish, regarding the, the sign and whether or not that is in violation of having essentially two signs for the ordinance. So I guess that actually led to a question. I was thinking, sorry, Scott. If, if they got rid of all the brick veneer and left the sign up, would that be, in your opinion, in substantial compliance with the original CUP?
I think that would just be- Then, then the only issue would be whether it's consistent with the master sign program, which can be amended, and consistent with the zoning code. If it's the council's desire to interpret that this is not a sign, but this is an architectural embellishment, then, then you could approve the sign accordingly.
Right, because if we, if we interpret it as embellishment, it no longer falls under the sign-
Exactly.
Plan. Now it becomes an architectural embellishment, which you're saying that at some point, you pass this line where-
Architectural enhancements or modifications are no longer in compliance with the original conditional use permit. Okay, so I, I just need to flesh that out.
I, I guess my, my main concern or multiple concerns is just sort of how, how we as a city, you know, how, how clear do we, are we about how we approach these types of applications? Because, you know, if, and this only brought, was, was brought up because the applicant brought up examples of other businesses in our city that underwent similar modifications, and those businesses are there. To my knowledge, there haven't been complaints about those being inconsistent, or, you know, it's an eyesore. I mean, at the end of the day, we're, we're looking at the aesthetics of the plaza. We're trying to create something that's beautiful, that's vibrant, that's successful. I have a hard time understanding why consistency is good. That, that's my, my main issue. It, it seems really subjective, and I think we've gone through all these different comments and we can't really come to a conclusion. Like, Councilmember Fish thinks, says that, you know, consistency is something that he feels good. I, I'm trying to understand if there's a rational reason that plazas with consistent architectural designs perform better than other plazas that may have variations in its exterior architecture. Like Councilmember Fish said, I mean, we all want this plaza to be successful. So I want to under, I, I want to go in the direction that best helps the plaza as a whole. And, you know, there doesn't seem to be a very clear-cut rational answer to that. I, I also appreciate Councilmember Chavez earlier brought up, you know, trying to go in a direction where there is sort of like a uniform palette or some sort of uniform design that the owner can work out with the tenant. You know, if, if only we knew what businesses were certainly going to go into this building, then we wouldn't have this issue right now. But I just feel like, you know, this is, these are the cards we're dealt with right now. And we can't turn back the clock and try to redo things. This is what we're faced with. I'm in favor of moving in a, in a direction that will allow the plaza to succeed. And if the business owner and, or the tenant and the property owner both agree that this is the best direction they're moving forward, I would probably, I, I, I think we should definitely seriously consider that. And we also have to bear in mind sort of the relative sort of differences between what was initially submitted versus what is being proposed now. And I don't think that was included as part of our staff report, the first two iterations.
Yeah, I think they mentioned it in the report.
Did they?
With the Red Lanterns and there was a whole bunch of different stuff.
No, it was like a, it was like, almost like a mural outside of the wall, right? Yeah, so, so I think, you know, looking at what they originally proposed, I mean, this is
Yeah, this is-
Almost nothing compared to that original one. Yeah, I, I just, I just think there is, there's good evidence to, to move forward and, and consider that. But obviously, there's five of us here to make that decision.
Councilmember Chavez?
Well, I changed my mind about five times after talking. I'm not sure where I am at now, but, you know, it is a difficult decision. And a couple of things come to my mind is that, you know, originally I started with the idea, you know, we started with a certain architectural style, has been mentioned, a consistent look. Maybe that's not working, and maybe that won't work in the future. You know, you've got to remember, this project started, what, eight years ago or something? At least, 10 years ago, maybe? And, you know, I don't think that, that architectural design has really changed that much from the original idea. But now, of course, as we have gotten tenants, and I think we all agree that we want this, this, this place to work. I mean, we're all tired of seeing the sun, the fences up, everything. I mean, it's, it's getting exciting that it's coming nearer and nearer, I think, and most people will agree with that. But the question becomes for me, has that original design run its course? Is it going to work for, and I think you brought that up- Is it going to work for, and I think you brought that up, the changing dynamics of what existed ten years ago versus what exists today, and what people need to attract customers to their businesses. Frankly, I don't see anything offensive about this entrance at all. I mean, it's, to me, it seems nice, pleasing, and, and if it's going to attract customers to it, all the much better, for everybody. Of course, my concern is, I think that the issues have been spoken tonight, or talked about, is what happens with the rest of the ten units down the road, okay? And, you know, how do we address those issues? And as I mentioned before, and as Councilmember Mann mentioned, I would be more in favor if we can go back to this owner and say, look, it looks like this is the direction that your tenants are going, why don't we come to some agreement as to a certain palette, a certain style, so that we're all, at least we have some consistency. Of course, every store is not going to be exactly the same, and I don't know that we want that. I don't want to live in Irvine, not that, excuse me if anybody lives in Irvine.
My kids.
It is a certain way, and not that that's bad or good, but that's just the way it is. You know, we don't go down our, our roads, our streets, and see the same house over and over, they're different houses, and that gives us that community feeling. So, you know, it's just the type of, of community that we are. So, so for me, it's a tough, tough thing, how do we stay away from the hodgepodge sort of mix that we don't want? And, 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 but still allow some, some leniency, some, something to the tenants, to the owner, to attract those businesses that, that we all want. To me, that's the, that's the dilemma. You know, I, I'm not in favor, however, and that, and again, my concern, that's why I asked Eric about the precedent setting, is that I want to make sure that, you know, what we're doing here tonight, or whatever we end up doing, I don't really think it's fair to, to transfer whatever we decide tonight, to put that burden on staff, to try to come up or figure out, well, is that substantially in compliance with what the council expressed tonight? That, that's going to be very difficult to do, and I think would be unfair for them to do as well. And, and I'm not sure, what is this architectural embellishment term? Is that, is that a legal term somewhere that I missed somewhere? I didn't see that anywhere.
Decorative.
Where did that come from? Is that, is that a, is that an architectural term?
Yeah, it's an architectural term, and planning term as well.
Eric, we don't have embellishment in the code anywhere, do we?
It's just a decoration.
We've all been talking about, well, is it an embellishment, or is it a sign? I never remember seeing that in there.
You know, I have to profess, I don't have a, a great knowledge of architectural or design terms, I have to turn that back over to your.
I think it's in our code, right?
Is embellishment, is that in our code?
Or like architectural encroachment, kind of, kind of a thing.
Wasn't the balcony considered an embellishment?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, well regardless, I don't want to get too off topic.
There we go.
But I, I, you know, I don't, I don't know really at this point, I mean, like I said, I, I'm more inclined to move in another direction, other than what staff has recommended and what the applicant has recommended, and that is somewhere in between, somewhere we can establish a redesign, so to speak, a consistency with that redesign, so that we're all on the same page, and give something to everybody. Because otherwise, I'm afraid that if we just do it on a piecemeal basis, we're going to end up with a hodgepodge sort of, of, of mall, or whatever we want to call it, and I don't think any of us want to see that. And again, I, I commend the applicant and the architect, you guys have tried very hard. I, I've seen what you guys have done, and, and it's not like you've just saying, well, we're going to do it this way, and that's it. You have, you have, you know, compromised, I guess what you could say, to, to, and working with the city staff, so I, I commend you for that, and, and I think that's why we're, we're struggling with it, because, you know, we want to, I think, reward you for your efforts, and, and certainly, I think every one of us up here want to see you be the biggest success that you can be, but at the same time, you have to understand that we have a bigger picture to look at, and that is, you know, what is our city going to look like? What shape is it going to take? And that, that to me is a difficult part, so, I don't know, I, I, I guess we still have to hear from two others, but, but my, my, I'm, I'm more towards moving to a, to that third option, and see if we can work something out with the, with the owner to try to develop something more to work with.
Thank you. Mayor Protim, strengthless.
I too have changed my mind frequently in the last two hours, maybe.
One of those kind of things.
You know, I'm looking at the analysis, and it says that in 2011, the city council approved the shopping center with Spanish and Mediterranean architectural elements. The buildings featured rich tone colors, red tile roof, decorative stone veneer, metal canopies, arch windows, et cetera, et cetera. But I think the thing that's important in that first paragraph is that both the city and the property, property owner did not anticipate that any of the businesses that were coming into the shop would request making changes to the exterior. That typically, a tenant comes in, they put up a sign, and they do tenant improvements inside. Well, frequently. I mean, it, you don't think the analysis is correct? No? Okay.
Well, I'm here, sorry. Continue, don't, don't pay attention to me.
Okay, well, if, if I based my decision on the analysis at hand, it seems that, that would have been the, the thought process, that a tenant comes in, puts up a sign, and does the tenant improvements inside. Because it's, it's treading somewhat on new ground, this whole shopping center, when I look at, can you put up the picture of the whole shopping center, the outside?
This room?
Yes. When you're driving east and west and north and south, you don't even really see those buildings that much.
If you are looking at those buildings, it probably going to be in an accident in about two seconds, probably.
Exactly.
And you need a lawyer.
So, so where, where they're located, I mean, I honestly don't see that with that new design on the front and the embellishment, that it's taking away the Mediterranean feel. It's kind of like, you know, a, a house being a colonial style outside of the house, and then you walk in and it's furnished with, by an Asian family with, you know, maybe Buddhas or furniture, I don't know, different type, style of furniture.
Are all Asians a Buddhist?
Almost all, I know. But, or whatever the design might be. I have a Cape Cod style home, but necessarily, the interior is not designed in, in a Cape Cod style. But if you drove by, you'd say that's a Cape Cod style. I mean, I kind of visualize when I'm driving by there, and I did it again today, I'm like, you're absolutely right, you would have to pretty much try and take your eyes off the road to pay attention that there was something that maybe just didn't look Mediterranean or Spanish style. I look at that design and, and see it actually more as of an enhancement to the, the plain-looking windows on the outside. And when you give a CUP, it's to take a look at what the potential impacts might be on neighbors or surrounding businesses in this case. Right now, there's no impact, because they're the only ones there. So, we don't know what impact is, we don't have a crystal ball to, to say that this building with these enhancements are going to stop other people from coming in. Maybe the enhancements that are going to come in might be similar, they might be different, but then again, we have a CUP to be able to take a look at those individually and, and see if they're out of line with, with what we want. And I, I totally understand where staff is coming from, they're looking at the municipal code, I mean, that's, that guides us, that.
They're doing their job.
They're doing their job. We have the luxury of going beyond that, like Mr. Vale said, and we can say, well, that's nice, but, you know, we're going to change it. We can do that. So I think the CUP is in place for all those other places that might come after this one, that want to have something different. We can take a look at that and say, no, that's really out of line. These property owners have worked, they've, with the staff, they've changed the coloring, they've, they've, they've tried to make it the best they can with still having their own identity. So I think I would be more inclined to say, I want this to be a successful business, I want to see this center succeed. I don't think having this one enhancement is going to cause all the other people that come in to not be successful, or the center to not be successful. So I would vote in favor of it.
Alright, thank you.
I, I think it's been articulated many different ways, but I just, for, for the running risk of repeating a lot of the things that have been said, I think there are really two issues in front of us tonight. One is whether or not the signs are in compliance or are sign ordinance or, or in compliance with the, with the approved general sign program. The other question in front of us is whether or not the proposed architectural embellishment or the architectural design is in substantial compliance with what's, with the CUP that was approved along with the center. So I'll tackle the first one. It's been articulated by some, or the city attorney as well. One can look at the Asian characters, in this case Chinese characters, perhaps, well, actually, I shouldn't say Asian characters. Could be looked at as really a, a decorative element, because most of us couldn't, can't, can't read it. So, but yet, at the same time, as so many, as all the council member had articulated, the, the, the real sign is actually on the outside, on a canopy, outside of columns, a pilaster, or colonnade, if you call that. If you're walking down the colonnade, or walking down through the walkway, you would know which store you're getting in, and I think Councilmember Fish mentioned, it'll be nice to know, watching, looking at something, you know what you're getting yourself into.
And even if it's in another language, at least.
Or even if it's another language, could be, you know, could be a Spanish element, yeah, yes. So, I personally don't have an, an, a problem in treating that as an architectural embellishment or decoration, and I think the, also, the applicant actually provided a, a picture showing some historically or culturally, it's in a packet, that is not unusual for such a architectural design to have some kind of characters that go along with that, as an architect. So, in, in my mind, it's a cultural, architectural, decorative, decorative element, so.
Do we know where that, that came from? I hate, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you referred to that photo, do, do we know where that came from? Is that another one of their restaurants somewhere?
I don't know, maybe the applicant can tell us where.
Do you know, where, where's this photo from? Do you know? China? That's a long ways from here, huh?
Yeah, so, so that's one. The other one that, and, and also, the other question is whether or not this embellishment is in substantial compliance with the shopping center. I think staff is very careful in pointing out, this center has a sort of, when we approved it, the, the, the owner had proposed a sort of a Spanish Mediterranean, as signified by its red tile roof, by the archways and all that. But however, personally, I do not find this design not in compliance with a Spanish design. I would like to point everybody, I don't know how well you can read this, this is what we called Spanish colonial revival style. Could be signified by a very plain building, but with very embellished entrances. And the one picture I'm showing here is the California Tower in Balboa Park. I mean, if you look at a lot of Spanish colonial architecture, you actually do see a very rather flat front, with very embellished, very decorative entrance, and that's what really signified a Spanish colonial style, that's how we, we would call this, the moment we see that, we would call it, oh, that's Spanish colonial. So.
So what would you call this?
It's a, it's a.
It's not Spanish colonial, I don't think.
It's an interpretation.
Fusion.
Fusion, fusion. But what I'm saying is, it's not unusual to have in, in a Spanish architect, have an embellished entrances. And I think some of the other folks already mentioned, or, it's really, what we're trying to strike for is between garish and hodgepodge, so articulated, and, and, and monotony, sterile, warehouse, I mean, if you go to a warehouse store, I mean, you don't expect anything, but when you go to downtown, you expect everything a little, you know, a lot of varieties. And I think one of the challenges for, for designers, for shopping centers, at least for, for today, for retail or restaurant, is how to induce that vitality without coming across as garish, and, and I think one of the difficulties we pointed out is this shopping center really does not have an architectural guideline that they can follow. So it's really up to us as a, as a body to decide how, whether or not this is too much. In my mind, this is really nothing more than glorified entrance. It is not, it's very scaled down, it's very toned down, as the Mayor Protim pointed out, you wouldn't even see that, when you're driving by, and I think the, actually, the picture actually really showed that, I mean, you see a dark hole there, it's hardly anything, it's not neon light, it's not blinking lights, I don't think that this would be, I think adds the character of entering the restaurant, but yet, still remains rather timid. And to Councilmember Chavez's point, and perhaps this can set up as a little bit of a, this is what we deem would be acceptable, and I don't disagree that you may not want that to be something that's, you want staff to have to determine, maybe next time, we have to bring it back to the council for. But I personally do not find this, this proposed design, the scaled down, toned down design, to be not in compliance of the, with the, with the shopping center design. So, I, I think that, that's really where I stand.
Yeah, but I have a quick question you just brought, based on, Eric, I mean, let's say somebody doesn't want to put in a, a neon sign, or some, something that I think we all would agree is like, pass that, push as the envelope. I mean, how does that play out? I mean, does that, I mean, what control do we have, or do we lose that tonight? I mean, we haven't made a decision yet.
No, you don't lose that tonight, you still have the sign program in place, and I'm assuming that a neon sign wouldn't be permitted under the sign program. So if an applicant wanted that, they would have to request it in their application, it would probably get denied by the planning commission, and that would come back before you, and you'd be back here to decide whether it was consistent with the sign program, or whether you wanted to amend the sign program to allow neon lights.
If I could just add one more point.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, 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 just one last point, is that even if the mall, or this, in this case, this building actually got its intended tenant, at some point in time in the history of a shopping mall, the life of a shopping mall, there'll be change hands, there'll be people coming and going, you know, one day it could be Montgomery Ward, next day it could be Sears, and now it's Sears not doing well either, so who knows what's the next one? So there will be some changes, and I think as a, as a body, we need to anticipate some kind of modification at some point. So, I don't think that we should expect, even with a CUP, with a new mall, there will be absolutely no changes, we should expect some changes to, to a front of a building. And I think it's been articulated, you really don't want this to be, you know, repeat every store to look the same, you want some kind of identity, some kind of branding, if you will, of the stores, and I think it just add interest. If you look at our Main Street, most of our storefronts are different. Yeah, and that's why Main, Main Street, Main Street, instead of Orange County. But even Orange County is trying to do that.
We're picking on Orange County a lot, aren't we?
Because I don't live there.
Well, that's because both of our sons live there, that's why we don't.
Absolutely, we're picking on them, so, you know, why you move away, so, so, well, that, 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 that can come.
Can I, can I just ask one? Is there any possibility to, or is there any, maybe I should ask the council, is there any, any interest in, and, and I know we're going to make a decision on this tonight, in going back to Mr. Wang and revisiting this issue somehow, that, I know he's already turned us down once, but, but maybe he'll hear what we're saying, because I, I got to believe that. because I gotta believe that, that no matter what our decision is tonight, when and if this comes back to us again, there may be a different outcome, and to me, it would seem to make more sense to head that off in the future, and, and, you know, to develop that, that kind of parameters, I guess you could say. So, I don't know, maybe that's just for staff to explore, based on what you've heard tonight. We're, I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be necessarily part of the motion that we're gonna approve, but, no, I understand that because not before, but.
Like a Daven architectural program as well.
Well, something, I mean, there's some dialogue, I think, that needs to be opened up, because we now see it's, it's an issue, and it's probably going to be one in the future, since we have so many vacancies there, I can't imagine that somebody else isn't gonna come and say, hey, we'd like to put, you know, this in front of our store, and, well, wait a minute, you know.
We, we got some good sense from the, the discussion tonight, and staff and I will brainstorm.
And perhaps it might be an element to consider in our specific plan for the area to, you know, before something can be developed, should be some kind of program that help define the architect, character of the tenant improvements as well.
Or maybe we need to revisit the signage, I don't know, when's the last time we looked at that sign, the municipal code regarding signage and stuff?
It's been a while since you.
So that might be, that might be an issue that we need to take a look at.
We could take the first step first with.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, these are the kind of things that, that, that perhaps should you, we should use to, to look at those issues. I think it brings an issue to us that now we know is, we can probably hopefully resolve.
Yes, okay.
On a tempo for motion?
Are we doing two motions?
Could be one, could be the, depending on how you package it.
Well, I think, well, actually, it can be, I can take a shot at the motion, I think it actually can be very simple emotion. And that is that I would make a motion that we reverse the planning commission's decision and grant the request for the exterior improvements submitted by the applicant in this matter.
A second.
Did you wanna, did you have a question about that?
Well, it might be just a technicality, but I, I think the planning commission didn't make a decision to approve it, they're just recommending counsel.
No, they denied it.
They denied it.
They denied it.
Right, no, they're, they're recommending that the city council deny it, right?
The, the, this is, this is, what the planning commission did was provide a recommendation to the city council not to amend, not to amend the, or modify the conditional use permit. If it's the desire of the city council to approve what's before you tonight, the changes, perhaps the simplest thing to do would be to find that these changes are in substantial compliance with the approved CUP.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that the applied changes are in compliance with the CUP, and, and grant the request for the exterior improvements by the applicant.
Thank you, you wanna do?
Second.
All right, is move in seconded, roll call vote please, Madam Quill.
Before you vote, I'm, I'm concerned that if you adopt that motion, that without clarifying that further variations in the future from the approved plans have to come back to planning commission for recommendation and for your approval.
Well, that's why I would brought up what, what, that, I mean, we need something more.
You, you do, but you might not be able to obtain what you're looking for from the property owner.
Right, well then I would, I would amend that motion to provide that any future changes to the design elements of that Camellia Square be brought back before the council. Is that okay, Eric?
A second.
Okay, is move in seconded, Madam Quill, roll call please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
No.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Council, oh, excuse me, Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu.
Yes, so the motion has been approved, so moving on to the next item. The next item is item number nine, unfinished business.
Where are we?
It is the approval of agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society
Ah, yes.
For animal control, shelter, and licensing services.
Actually, Mayor, Mayor Yu, I will be probably taking on this one, Mr. Forbes's horse and sick, so his voice is a little off today. Before you tonight is, I've tried several times tonight, Mayor Protem and Michael doesn't want to go home.
We don't want to catch you.
Before you tonight is some of the work by Ms. Rigby and Mr. Forbes over the last several months to come to an agreement based on the council's direction back in November of last year, which was, that direction was to purchase animal control and shelter services in the open market from San Gabriel Valley Humane Society in lieu of issuing an RFP. Since November, staff has been working with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society to negotiate a new agreement. In addition to continuing with animal control services and shelter services, staff also requested that San Gabriel Valley Humane Society also take over the dog licensing program as well. In addition to that, the canvassing to ensure that, for lack of a better term, scofflaw type of folks are licensing their animals properly and doing that. Canvassing and dog licensing, but the canvassing in particular ensures that both the city and the agency that we contract with are making sure with substantial compliance with the program, and also from a revenue side, making sure that we're receiving enough revenue and the adequate level of revenue. The agreement, the agreement that we've come to would pay San Gabriel Valley Humane Society fifteen thousand two hundred and eight dollars a month for all animal control, shelter, and licensing services. The Humane Society also provides this same level of service to the city of San Gabriel. They also have retained a client recently in the last couple of years of the city of Rosemead, and that is just for sheltering services. So the city would also receive all licensing revenue collected. San Gabriel Valley Humane Society would cover all administrative costs related to the licensing program. This initial term would be for three years through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and have up to five extensions after that, up to two thousand and twenty-four. With that, part of the reason for some of the adjustments that have been made related to this agreement is that once, before the, before two thousand and twelve, the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society was part of a joint powers authority with many, many other agencies throughout the San Gabriel Valley. That joint powers authority dissolved, and several agencies stayed with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, including Temple City and San Gabriel. Since that time, though, we have had, gone on a month-to-month agreement since two thousand and twelve. So the adjustments that are being made reflect some of the rising costs that the Humane Society is dealing with since two thousand and twelve, and addressing those issues. So Ms. Rigby, the acting controller, acting executive director of the Humane Society is here today, and we're here for any questions.
I have a quick question, refresh my recollection as to what other cities San Gabriel Valley Humane Society services. I know they service our city, San Gabriel, are there any others?
Rosemead for just sheltering services, correct?
Hi, as of last July, we began servicing the city of Rosemead for sheltering services and limited animal control services in the evenings and on Sundays.
Okay, but primarily it's San Gabriel and us?
Right, correct.
Could you help us distinguish the difference between animal control and animal sheltering?
Animal control is where we provide services for picking up stray dogs, picking up dead animals, barking complaints, that type of service. Sheltering is literally sheltering the animals, such as Peter, we house him, we take care of him, feed him.
So city of Rosemead's officer will pick up the animal and bring it to your?
Their public safety people pick up the animals, yes, yes.
But you will hold them, hold the animal for them?
Correct, correct, and then we adopt it out, hopefully, and, yeah.
So if there's a dog just running around the city, do you guys come out and pick it up?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they're very good, they're pretty quick, actually, in my experience, yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mrs. City Manager or San Gabriel Valley Humane Society? Well, I have some concerns, but I've got questions, so I wait for them later.
Okay, all right. So at this point, I'll open up for public comments.
Any one want to address, no?
I'll close public comments, and time for council comments, I'll start with Councilmember Chavez.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor Yu. When I, this, when we first were kind of filled in on this, I had expressed some concerns to our city manager regarding the fact that our annual licensing and microchip clinic and, and rabies shot was gonna be, was gonna go away. And as you all know, we've been doing that every summer here in the park, and I think our community has gotten used to that. And actually, the last few years has been a pretty, pretty good turnout. And so I have, I have two concerns, I know that the agreement provides for, to, to keep that that, that clinic going, but, but it only, in the agreement, it only provides for that one clinic to be held for animal licensing and low-cost microchip at San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, at their address in San Gabriel. I'm concerned that, that people here in our community will see that as a burden, or more of a burden to travel over there than having it here in our park. And so that, that's a concern of mine, that, and I, that's why I asked who, who they service, because obviously, it's not a concern for San Gabriel residents, because that's where they live. But it is, and it's not that it's that far away, but it is a little trek, especially if you're gonna take an animal over there. And I don't know, I'm assuming that they have the facilities, but I know that, that here in the park, in the past, we've had lineup of animals all around the block, and so it does take a big area. My second concern is that, and I don't know if any, some of you may be aware, that our Sister City program uses that clinic as a fundraiser regarding the rabies.
I did not know that.
I think a lot of people are unaware of that. And, and if we were to adopt this agreement, the way I understand it, that will be lost. And that's quite a chunk.
How much is that?
Terry, Steve, you're here, how much is it, Steve? If you can give us a ballpark, yeah, come on up, if you don't mind. This is, as you know, Steve Terry, former president of the Sister City.
Sister City, yeah.
Sister City, still involved, though.
Hi, Steve.
Good evening. On a yearly basis, our profit changes because the vet sometimes charges us for the serum. Sometimes he doesn't, this last year, he didn't. So basically, it's about five hundred dollars for the serum, and I'm just saying roughly speaking, because I, I'd have to go and check with our treasurer. So speaking, it's about eight hundred dollars if we have to pay for the serum versus twelve to thirteen hundred dollars if we don't. That's based, and that's also based on the number of dogs that, that show up.
So what, what, what do you normally make from that event?
I would say, safely saying that we would make eight hundred dollars a year.
Okay, oh, so it's only, I thought it was, I thought it was more in the thousands of dollars if you don't make.
Well, it is if, if we don't have to pay for the serum.
Okay, I don't quite understand, so.
Well, the, the vet.
It's five hundred to eight hundred dollars, so.
No, 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 the, the, the serum is about five hundred dollars if we get charged for it. The vet basically volunteers his time and his staff. Sometimes he bills us for the serum, sometimes he doesn't. This last year, we made a little bit more because we didn't get billed for the serum.
So how does your group make money from this?
We charge, well, up, up till this year, it's been five dollars a, a charge of five dollars, a dog for the, the rabies shot.
So you keep that five dollars for every dog that goes through that system? Okay, do you have any numbers for us as far as the last few years in average?
We, we basically, I, I did it personally, I, I researched last year because we were thinking about raising the price of the, of the shot. And talking to Brian Yarzum.
Yarzum.
Yarzum, he said, well, basically, we were, we were, we weren't able to do that because of the law, basically. And when I did research it, I did find that I believe, I believe it was San Gabriel was the least expensive compared to us, but they, they charged, and I'm gonna just say, about fifteen dollars a shot, is that about right? Some charged more, I mean, there, there were, there were some cities that, that had programs where they were charging twenty, twenty-five, thirty dollars for the shot. So comparatively speaking, we thought we were doing a pretty good job of charging just the five dollars.
Okay, but I, I hate to belabor the point, but I still haven't heard a dollar amount.
Well, you mean how much we've made?
Yeah, what's your profit?
Profit.
Yeah, what's your profit on that?
Well, our, like I say, our profit varies, but I, I would say safely saying, our profit is eight hundred dollars a year.
All right, so that's what you make every year is about eight hundred?
Every, eight hundred dollars a year, yeah.
All right, and so that wouldn't be necessarily end of the world scenario?
No, it's not a, it's not a deal breaker.
It's a lot of work for you guys.
It's, it's work, but it's also fun, because we get to see all the dogs.
Okay, thanks, thank you, thanks, Steve, okay.
All right.
So anyway, so that, that's a couple of my concerns, you know, again, I, I have a, probably a question, when is this, this will go in effect then? I, it's a little confusing, because I know our Connect Magazine is advertising the event for this summer in the park, but if we approve this agreement, it goes into effect immediately, and so I'm, when, when, did you reconcile that at all?
For this year, this, the event is going forward, is my understanding, and it is in the intent of the Humane Society, while not in the agreement, as you've, as you've expressed, to continue that on a go-forward basis.
Continue what?
The rabies vaccination clinic going forward. I'll let Mr. Forbes begrudgingly come forward.
Hey, Becky's gonna sit next to him, not me, so it's like, Becky's gonna be calling in sick next week.
I have this stack of boxes right between us. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This year, the, the agreement takes effect, if it is approved, the agreement would take effect on July first. However, since traditionally we have had the annual event in early July, we went ahead and, working with the Humane Society, we went ahead and scheduled it for this year on July eighth at City Hall and, and Temple City Park, consistent with the way it's been in the past. If this agreement is approved, we would turn the licensing function over to them effective July one, but their staff would be here at Temple City Park on July eighth, doing the licensing, and we would provide staff to help them out with that. Going forward, the agreement does say that the society is required annually to provide a microchipping and licensing clinic. It does not specifically include the rabies, because traditionally, the Humane Society has not provided that service, it's been provided extra through the Sister City Association and a volunteer veterinarian. So the intent is that that certainly would continue, but we didn't include it in the contract just because historically, the Humane Society has not provided that service. We also agreed to allow future events after this year to be conducted at the Humane Society's property, just because they, since they're the ones who would be doing the licensing and the microchipping with their staff and their systems and their equipment, it's just much more convenient for them to be able to do that out of their own facility as opposed to having to bring all of their equipment and staff up here. And it is, you know, it is not in Temple City, it is in San Gabriel, but it's pretty close over the border to San Gabriel, so our, our hope was that it wouldn't be too much of an inconvenience for Temple City residents to, to go there, and it was just the, the reason we did it there was just because people would already be used to going there for their licensing and other, other needs anyway, so that, that was why it was just done that way.
So based on what I've heard this evening, our residents, it appeared that they will have to pay more for their rabies shots, apparently.
The, yeah, the, so the Sister City Association, I, I wasn't, I'm not aware of, of the conversation with Brian about the law related to the cost of the shots, we do not have the cost of the shots in our fee schedule, and historically, it's just been up to the Sister. And historically, it's just been up to the Sister City Association to set that price. And they notified us that this year, they had planned to increase the price from five dollars to six dollars. So all of the publicity that we've been doing has had the new six-dollar price, based on what they communicated to us.
Who communicated to you?
The Sister City Association.
Six dollars?
Six dollars.
Okay, for rabies?
Yes.
But that's probably only gonna be for this year, because next year, it goes back to San Gabriel. And then what happens there, I'm presuming is between San Gabriel Humane Society, and perhaps they can work something out with Sister Cities or some other organization, that's up to them, but that has nothing to do with us.
Yeah, we, I, I've already discussed with Cindy, and we would, we would encourage them and hope that they would continue to work with the Sister Cities Association to do that. The rabies vaccine is not a service that the Humane Society provides. They only do the microchipping and the licensing at that event. So it's, the Sister City isn't competition for them or anything like that. So I would think it would be reasonable for them to continue working with them.
Okay. Does it have any further questions?
Councilmember Mann?
I, I just have a one question, because with this agreement, we would essentially be, or San Gabriel Valley Humane Society would be doing the licensing for us, so that means they would be collecting the fees for us? And then that, those, that revenue would then be turned over to the city, is, is that correct?
Correct, they would collect the revenue, and they have to account for that revenue as it comes in, and then pay it, pay it to the city. They will not be keeping any of it.
And, and under our existing system, that, the database of licensed dogs is kept at City Hall, but under this system, it would stay with San Gabriel Valley Humane Society?
Correct, the, the system that we use is here at City Hall. The system that they use is a cloud-based system, from what I understand. So it, it doesn't reside necessarily in their building, but it resides in the internet. So presumably, if we, for whatever reason, wanted to have access to that system, I would imagine that we probably could. But we've also included, they will, there will also be paperwork, of course, related to the licenses when people submit their applications. The agreement states that the Humane Society would be the custodian of records for those documents, for the purposes of public records. So if we received a public records request or whatever, they would be required to provide that information. And they would be required to provide us the documents based on our destruction schedule and all of that.
Okay, thanks.
Eric, will you, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but I didn't see anything in this agreement then that would prohibit the city or any organizations from continuing to provide that rabies clinic? Since, as I thought I heard, they don't provide that anyway. So if we wanted to, theoretically, we could still have such a clinic. Of course, that would be our decision together, I suppose, with any organization that wanted to do that.
Correct.
It appears to me that, that it is a uniquely Temple City event, because we use Temple City veterinarians and Temple City organizations. So I would not expect necessarily San Gabriel Humane to take that on.
Correct.
Or work with those organizations, but nothing in here that could prevent us from doing that. So we basically have, I guess, a year to sort that out if, if we want to, so that, because this year, we're gonna have it. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's the way I read it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councilmember Fish?
I'm good.
Yes?
Yep, yep. Well, I have no more comments and, but, so with that, ready to entertain motions?
I, I just would like to add one more thing. This, this, I think everyone should understand it, this is not necessarily a cost-cutting method, this is more of a, let's let them do it, they're handling it, it'll free up our resources to do other things as well. On its face, it, it makes sense. Like I said, I, my, my only concern is, you know, the, the feedback that we may get from the community having to travel. But, you know, if you guys remember, although you guys weren't here, when we looked at this issue a few years ago, and this place was packed, and there's no way they wanted to, us to leave San Gabriel Valley Humane Society.
Right.
I would hope that they remember that and be willing to travel that couple extra miles to take advantage of the services there. So, you know, I'd guess that, well, time will tell on that, so. Hopefully, I just want people to understand, and then, and they do a good job, I think, and, and continue to do a good job, so. Alright, with that then, I would, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that, let's see.
To approve.
Yeah, to approve the agreement with San Gabriel Valley Humane Services, Humane Society, I'm sorry, as proposed, where is it? Yeah, proven agreement between the City of Temple City and San Gabriel Valley Humane Society for Animal Control, Shelter, and Licensing Services. And we authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Let's move and second it, Madam Clerk, roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes. Looking forward to continued partnership, thank you.
Jane, by the way, they got rid of the German Shepherd. Well, they didn't get rid of it, it got adopted. Be careful in my wording.
That could be misinterpreted.
Thank you for, thank you for having that adopted by someone.
Because otherwise, council.
Might have ended up in my house.
Okay, next item is new business, there is none communication, there is none update from Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Yu, considering it's ten oh five, real briefly, I'm going to embarrass her once more. I informed you earlier today that our city clerk, Peggy Quo, who is a certified city clerk, CMC, actually earned her master municipal clerk designation just on June first, so congratulations. There's only thirty percent, a little less than thirty percent of all city clerks throughout Southern Cal, all, throughout California, excuse me, have a master municipal clerk designation, and our clerk does, so congratulations to Peggy.
Congratulations.
She's still gonna stay with the youth committee though, right? Alright, just to make sure.
Alright, any update from Mr. City Attorney?
None, except to remind you that I will be on vacation starting next Wednesday.
Nice.
And your next regular council meeting will be handled by your Assistant City Attorney, Greg Murphy. I will think of you often and fondly while I'm on vacation.
Sure you will.
Alright, well, enjoy the vacation. That's true, well deserved. Next item, city council reports, we're gonna add ad hoc or standing committee meetings, any report back?
I do have one, oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, I do too.
Go, go ahead.
I was just gonna report from our school district standing committee, which Councilmember Chavez and I are on. We actually just had a meeting on May twenty-sixth between our school district and city council ad hoc committees.
Standing committee.
Standing committee, and we actually had a very successful meeting. We discussed several things, most of them were basically updates. A, a couple was this, our, the school bond projects, where they are, our Longden Elementary School traffic calming update. We are in partnership right now with them, with our free little libraries. And we discussed on how to maintain them and how to gather books. And then, let's see, we talked about some upcoming school events and how we could support the school district. And then the biggest thing was really the discussion of just the purpose of the standing committee. And we all agreed it was basically just to keep the lines of communication open, to be able to talk about the needs of both of our, our governing bodies, and, and how far we've actually come in the last few years, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mann?
Yes, so I'd like to report out for the commissioner application ad hoc with Mayor Protem Sternquist and I. So we recently went through the first round of interviews with the ad hoc committee for all the outstanding applications for our commissioners. And one of the, one of the issues that came up was that, as you know, our Public Arts Commission has three vacancies. And there was only two applications, I believe. So we didn't have enough applications to evaluate to fill those. And my understanding from, the city clerk has informed us that we had received applications after the original set deadline, additional applications. So on that note, I think the ad hoc would like to recommend for full council consideration that we evaluate and extend it, and evaluate those additional applications that have come in to, so that we're able to fill those three slots. And on, as relating to the other commissions, we've already gone through those. And I, I believe we've already conveyed to both Mr. City Manager and, and the city clerk that we intend to, we've already provided a list to bring those commissioners back for full council interview.
Thank you.
And, and just one, one additional thing, and Mayor Protem can correct me if, if I say something incorrectly about this. We, we also think that in light of all the applications coming in for our commissions, to bring back to full council to discuss sort of the role of our Public Arts Commission, it's something that hasn't really been discussed in a while. And so I think it's important, you know, as a public policy, we've established that as one of the goals. And perhaps as full council, we should really evaluate where that stands.
We should put that as a future agenda item?
Well, I, I would suggest however, if that's gonna be the recommendation, that we do that first before we go through the interview process. Because based on the determination of what we do with that commission, it may become a moot point as far as getting other commissioners. I, for one, and, and I, I plan on bringing this up during the council items separate, but might as well do it now, since we're on the topic.
Right.
I, I've been saying for a while that we need to reevaluate that whole commission. As many of you know, you know, we have, we, we did not adopt the, the funding source for that commission. They have no really, really, any funds that they had counted on to do any projects. There are no projects really on the board at this point. And I know they haven't met or met very infrequently in the last six to eight months. So I, I don't know, I, I would like to see that discussion sooner than later, even as soon as maybe if we can get it on the next agenda as to what we're gonna do with that commission. Because I don't see the purpose in going through the whole interview process, if those, if those, if that's gonna change. If it's not, then fine, we'll move on, but that's up.
Can we, can we get it on the next, would that be, is that something that's?
We can, we can. We have enough time to at least get something on the agenda.
Okay, I would say that, let's do that first.
And, and I, and my comments are not necessarily that, you know, we rush off and just, you know, dissolve it, but maybe there are other ways of, of using that.
Absolutely.
The talent that we have in the city. Whether it be an advisory committee, or, you know, I mean, it, if you recall a little bit of the history of it, it, it did well as, as an advisory committee. And, and the reason why we had elevated, I guess, to a commission was because of things that were happening at the time. And we had some projects that they could work on. And also, we were developing, hopefully, a funding source for future developments. But that has kind of changed and, you know, maybe it's another look at, and maybe.
Yeah, yeah, we should.
So those are things that we can discuss at that time.
Yeah, and, and that, that was the intent of the ad hoc to have this type of a dialogue. But as, as, at a future agenda item.
We weren't exactly sure what, William and I did discuss that, and that was an option we had thought about recommending also, that this would be another option along with, you know, opening up the interviews again. We just didn't know what your comfort level would be, since we had already started the interviews. So I think we were both in agreement that definitely it would be a time to take a look at that commission and see if it's still viable, or if we go the route of maybe being an advisory committee.
Okay, well, thank you, I think we should bring this back. And I guess the council's agreement will be next agenda item.
We will pull something together for your discussion.
And Peggy, the, you will contact the people for full council interviews.
Alright, thank you, any other report? If not, then we'll move on, next item, reimbursement expenses to the officials, or contact with state business, there is none. And at this point, we'll recess to the, I'm sorry.
Miss, item fifteen. Council items separate.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am so sorry. Yeah, I, council, next item, council items separate on the city manager's regular agenda. Thank, that reminder, Councilmember Chavez?
You're welcome.
Councilmember Chavez, how are you?
Well, I just have one thing, I, I actually today attended a, attended a very interesting meeting. I was invited to Pasadena City College to attend what they called their Centennial Facilities Master Plan Update. As you know, many of our students do attend PCC. And they have a, a big presence here, or they had a, they have classes at the high school, I believe, or they used to anyway. And so they are now engaged, or at least starting out, a new update on their master plan, buildings and facilities and things like that. It's, it's kind of similar to what we've talked about in our city, of course, but of course, on the campus. It's interesting, it's a, a twenty-year plan. Estimated, of course, it's difficult for them to estimate it, but the initial costs look like it's about a billion sixty million. And that's a lot of money. I was gonna ask, where are you gonna get that money from, but I was afraid to ask. Actually, they, they're, they're thinking of, of doing a bond, issuing a bond to do that stuff.
Have they proposed a certain amount of time, that's what's gonna?
Well, it's a twenty-year process, I think, but, but yeah, it is quite expensive, but, you know, so we, we reflect on what the high school's doing, and then, of course, you say that, it's quite a difference. But, yeah, very interesting, so more to follow, and I'll certainly provide any more information. I just think it's relevant, because our, our community is connected with the, with the schools, certainly. And, and if you guys remember President Verdine, who came to our council meeting last year, ahead of the, the meeting, and, and so, he did a good job, and he, and I think he has a good intent, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Fish?
I just wanted to start off by congratulating Peggy. Great job, I think we are all very fortunate to be able to work with her. And again, with your continuing education, I think it's great, I think we're very lucky, so I wanna do that. And then just really quickly, I know it's late, just wanted to remind everyone that the high school graduation is this Friday. Their all-night party is also this Friday, which is grad night. Grad night is a tradition here in Temple City. It's for the children to have a safe environment from ten PM to six AM, right after graduation. And it is run by volunteers, they raise about sixty thousand dollars to put it on. And they do work it all night, and I've had the privilege of working it for about twelve years. So they do have open tours to the public between nine PM, I'm sorry, eight PM and nine-thirty that night. Parents can go, children can go, anyone from the public can go, just to kind of see what the parents do, and what they do to keep our children safe, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann, any ideas?
Just really briefly, this, this coming Saturday at Live Oak Community Center, we will be celebrating our annual older American citizen of Temple City award. And this year, we have Grace Campos, so, so remember, last year, we had Mr. Rodenbacher, so. It was a great event last year, and I look forward to the celebration this coming Saturday.
And Jerry, it is a luncheon. It is, at one-thirty.
It's a late lunch.
Late lunch.
Late lunch, yes. Late lunch, yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist.
Just like to, um, invite everybody out to the San Gabriel Valley Open Streets Events, it's this Sunday from ten AM to three PM. It's in the city of El Monte, and they're actually closing off the streets, it's presented by Metro, and the COG has actually been working closely with Metro to, to help, um, get the word out about the event. So there will be Zumba and obstacle courses, live entertainment and food trucks, art workshops, bicycle safety workshops, a kids' bike rodeo, and a health fair, all the events are o- um, free, and family friendly, not the food, the events, or the event is free. Uh, family friendly and open to all ages, so if you wanna look for something nice to do, go out to El Monte.
Is that like a bus station?
Yes, it starts right in front of the bus station on San Anita.
It's a bus station.
All right, thank you. All right, I, um, only have one item, small item, I wanna recognize a, uh, rather familiar face here, he's not looking at me, I wanna recognize
Oh.
Mr. Ed Chan here tonight, he's a volunteer, uh, Sheriff's Department, and thank you for your service, and appreciate you here protecting us tonight.
They even give him, they, they even give him a car to drive around in, 'cause I've seen him.
Congratulations on to you two.
He, yeah, does a good job.
So thank you for coming here tonight, so. So at this point, we'll recess to the successor agency, uh, to the Temple City Community Redevelopment Agency meeting. Um, Madam, uh, well, called, called out to order, and Madam Clerk, uh, roll call, please.
Agency member Chavez?
Here.
Agency member Fish?
Here.
Agency member Mann?
Here.
Vice Chair Sternquist?
Here.
Chairman Yu?
Here, next item consent counter, all items may be approved, single motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Let's move and second it, uh, any objections, hearing none, motion approved, unfinished business, there is none, new business, there is none, communication, there is none, public comments, there is none, good, so. Uh, update from exec- executive director and agency council, there is none, and matters from agency members, there is none, so we adjourn and reconvene as the city council, and additional public comments on items not, uh,
Jerry?
items before, nope, okay, at this time.
Jerry's too tired, he's been at every event this week.
Jerry?
Yeah, 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 so at this time, we will, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.